I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Present.
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Alright, we got a quorum. Fun, so... Yeah. Last Thursday, I'll just warn everybody, was very good. So, warn everybody, the judges are here. We're in real trouble now. So, we, yeah, we... There's some increases that are putting pressure on us, so... We always find a way, Will, but yeah, I think the sheriff left out of here. I think I have a warrant out for my arrest. That tells you anything. But, you know, what we did was midpoint stays in, you know, we're finishing what we promised last year with the wage study, everybody's doing the midpoint. We're keeping that in, but we're taking everything else out in terms of salaries. And we've done it for new people, but I know we've got the health department here and maybe a scenario, situation. So, but we've definitely got our work cut out for us, you know, getting everybody to midpoint, and then if we can do raises on top of that, which is a pride, and we've done a lot last year. Again, we talked about it last Thursday, was I think we gave out $2 million, you know, to our employees last year. Most of it was raises and the rest was in one-time stipends, so it was, it was a big chunk. So, we're starting to get ahead of ourselves just a little bit on spending versus revenue. So, we've, we've got to keep on the path of going through things, sometimes line by line, finding creative ways to move things around so we can continue on the path of giving raises. That's what we want to do, but, you know, there's also a lot of other things we got to consider out there, you know, I've talked to a number of you guys, it's roads, stormwater, you know, those projects out there, that funding out there, so that needs money, that we've got to find ways. Red, we've talked about the ambulance.
Ambulance contract. Healthcare, yeah, we got some stuff.
So, the pressures, you know, building over time, we've done a lot, we've done as best as we can, but it's starting to build a little bit. We still have good reserves, so we're not in a bad spot by any means, but depending on how much we want to keep pushing, we'll find ourselves in a bad spot real quick. So...
President Rivas, I would also like to mention to everybody, if you did ask for an extra personnel, right now we are pushing that to the end of the agenda as well, or end of the, the final reading, so I don't know if you mentioned that.
Yeah.
I just don't want anyone surprised.
Right. And yeah, nothing is final till final reading, so if you got something approved last Thursday or today, or Thursday, you know, like Sylvia said, don't go out and spend that money yet, don't go out and sign that contract.
Don't sign contracts.
Don't go out and hire a bunch of people. Alright, we got the surveyor up first. So, anybody got anything else to add to that? I was stressed last, over the weekend, last couple of days. Ryan cooled me down a little bit coming in, so I feel a little bit better.
You should have talked to all of us.
I'm trying to convey it, am I not right now Sylvia?
Yeah, you are.
Am I still stressed? Alright, let's take it out on Kevin.
Thank you. General fund, no changes, just increase to midpoint.
A move to approve, please.
Second.
Second.
And third.
Well, there is a change, you're losing, you're giving back 60 bucks on county memberships, which is cool.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor and a second to approve, and that is...
Just for discussion.
Motion a second and discussion.
You said you are going, you are raising up your hourly?
The hourly, according to my letter, that I sent, 150 per hour for each.
Further discussion?
On that hourly?
That's...
You know, that, that might build up after...
That's the next line item, just see the surveyor's prep.
Oh, okay.
Preparation.
Okay.
I'll have you say that word, fun.
Let's go then.
I do have a question, and it, I mean, I'm not knocking it, I just curious how come it went down 60 bucks, are we losing the organizational nerve?
No, I assume that I had encumbered the previous year and that transferred forward, and basically the budget was $200.
No, good job, thank you.
Keep that up.
We try, thank you. Surveyor's perpetuation, I did...
Well, hold on, we gotta, we have to vote on the first.
So, the number is 198,198, is that right? Match it up. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, alright, that's good. Surveyor perpetuation?
Fundamentally, all the same, except I increased the hourly item, $5,000, as well as the FICAN perf to reflect the increase hourly.
That's good.
Why does perf go up for the increase hourly?
Perf went up because of the adjustment for the midpoint for the employees in...
Okay, but that doesn't have to do with the hourly, correct?
No.
Okay, we saw a few errors last Thursday.
Okay, yeah, we, we don't pay perf on the hourly employees.
Okay.
Further discussion, anything, their motion, make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion on the surveyor perpetuation, so the number is 213,658, correct? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign.
Thank you very much.
That was easy.
Yeah, how'd you get to be first?
Seniority.
That might be right, yeah.
Good answer.
Might have surveyed one of the first lines in the county. So, treasurer, we've got some discussion with you, I think.
Oh, what?
What?
A motion to approve?
Second.
Now we can start the discussion.
Motion a second, the floor discussion, for 260, no, 312,344?
No, those are just midpoint salary increases.
How much of your training and education did you, did you use? Last year, did you use all of that 1,085?
No. Um... Where is the... Oh, down there on the bottom? No, we didn't, I'm gonna get, if I had to guess, I'd say it was roughly around 300. I'm not sure exactly what we spent.
I just wonder, because a lot of departments are starting to get pretty healthy, training and education and, you know, we're looking for ways to...
Are you looking at that next 1217?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's, that comes out of that fund that we divide up in training in a bunch of departments.
Oh, I got you, yeah, like five departments or something that...
Clerk, auditor, treasurer.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, no problem.
Alright, for the general funding, further discussion on the number, seen and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Do we need to address that, do we need to prove that?
It's a proper thing. I'll move to approve.
It's in there.
Move to approve.
Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Are you done?
Yep.
So, the investment, it's got us all stirring up here.
It's crazy.
Yeah, keep that up, whatever you're doing, keep that up.
Well, you know.
Can you explain?
Don't hurt your hand.
Happen a little bit, if you can, or...
Uh, it's basically just the Fed increasing their rates, transfer, trickles down through the, the banks offering us more money to, to hold our money.
Ryan just handed this to me, and it's, it looks like the, the trust Indiana, it looks like a, like an, I don't know what the OP, if that's an opt-in or something, but that looks like where the increases are coming from. Ryan, do you want to speak briefly on what you may know about it?
Again, I, that's, I actually don't know that much about it, other than what I've talked to you. Know more about what your forecasts were, but I guess my real questions are, you know, is this more like a one-year, two-year, is this a foreseeable thing going forward?
It's, it's really, it's, it's, it's hard to say, because like I was saying, these are all tied to the Fed rate, so whatever the Fed's doing, it's kind of the banks are following.
Did you change what you were doing, or it's invested the same and the rates went up?
Same, it was just...
No. Oh, okay.
We were going from like 0.01% to now I'm getting like...
Sorry, Ryan, I...
Yeah.
So, you didn't change banks or anything like that?
Nope.
Uh...
Same banks, we just get an extra distribution from the Indiana trust, and other than that...
Well, we've had the money with Indiana trust for a couple of years now too, but they were, again, at point 17, 0.09, you know, so it's just the, the Fed rate. If that goes up, all the banks are giving us more money.
Because last year, Ryan was just telling me, at this point in time last year, we brought in $370,000 roughly, and right now we've brought in 3.8 million, so it's a little bit of an increase.
That's a lot. And then, but do you remember like in '20, when we, like, brought in zero?
Yeah.
You know, because every...
Wow.
Everything tanked, so...
It's just, I'm nervous, you know?
I don't think we can use that as a long source of funding, because, I mean, I think the rates are going to be up, I hate to say this, for another two to three years, just from what I see, I hope they go down, but...
Well, it depends on what side you're on, right?
Sitting here, we want them to stay up.
When, when rates are up, everything else is bad mortgage rates.
Right, exactly.
Car loans.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I really, I don't know how to like predict what's going to happen, all I can tell you is it is tied to with the Fed, you know, the banks are giving us what?
Right.
You know, pinch below with the Fed.
How they ladder them, you know, every year, and then kind of flat powder, I don't know.
It's not, because it's, it's a daily change.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Obviously, our biggest expense is personal services, and it just, to, to rely on such a big increase, and then all of a sudden it starts trickling back down, and we're going to be in a bad spot with...
Right.
You know, being able to, you know, what we had proved previously in terms of employees and raises, so, I mean, we're going to increase it a little bit, but, alright.
Yeah, I wish I could, I wish I could give you more insight, but I really have no way of knowing what's going to happen.
Yeah, you know anybody at the Fed, you want to talk to them?
I know, I can't call, I can't call them.
She knew, she...
They blocked me, actually.
Blocked you? Alright, so, that's it, I think you're good.
Okay.
Good to go, thank you.
Thank you.
Public defender.
I'm glad we're getting through the judges, though, they're all staring at me.
Is that age before beauty?
That's what that is. Yes.
Alright, so, looks like public defendering, just in the midpoints, so...
A move to approve?
Second.
Motion second, for $87,066, discussion? Seen none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Public defender supplemental. 1,200, same thing, same number, $94,000.
Oh, it's on the same page, oh, move to approve.
Motion.
Stack up.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, it's a great job, Ken.
It is a good job.
Smashed it.
Thank you.
One more, you're not done?
Yeah, there's one.
Getting all excited. 916 Street.
Did it correct it?
Oh, oh, I see it.
No one changed to it, though.
That's a grant.
I'll move to approve, based on, being a grant.
Second on 8, $81,572, is that correct?
Yes.
Seen none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Couldn't have done it without you.
I appreciate it.
Going smooth. Alright, general courts in front of you, uh, looks like just an increase in the...
Pay?
Yeah, in the midpoint.
A move to approve?
Second.
Motion second at $427,519, discussion? Seen none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. What's 1,200 then, public defender? Should we call Ken back?
Well, some of the money that comes into the public defender supplemental is monies that we get from bonds that defendants post, and then if we appoint a public defender, if it's a misdemeanor, we can take $50 out if they're convicted, if it's a felony, we can take $100 out, that money goes to public defender supplemental. So, how much money comes in depends on how many people are convicted and have posted bonds.
A move to approve? Well, I'm sorry, Judge, excuse me.
Now, there's a motion, second on the floor for the public defenders, 1,200, at $20,000, was there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
County user fee, jury fund, 2507.
Yes.
Looks like it's the same, $45,000, down here.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign. Court interpreter grant.
Move to approve.
I'll second, 9108.
Okay, so, Judge, can you explain that one? We had a, we got a $16,000 increase, where?
You got more grant money?
We had a trial last year where the defendant spoke Punjabi.
And you don't speak Punjabi?
And in fact, one of the few people who speaks Punjabi in the state of Indiana works for the Supreme Court, and because of that, she couldn't serve as interpreter, so we had to get two interpreters, we ended up getting a husband and wife who are from Ohio, so they didn't have to fly in, they only had to have one hotel room, but it's still expensive to have a trial with two interpreters that are court certified. Most of our interpreters, most of the cases that we have, with, that we use interpreters, most defendants speak Spanish, but we've had Somali, we've had Italian, we use Language Line, which is a free service where we can call in, and then it's over speakerphone, but you can't have a trial over speakerphone, so that's, that's where the money goes.
So, are we getting more, because it says it's a grant?
We, we asked for a grant in part because they knew what was happening in Indianapolis about that specific trial.
So, you got more money for...
We got more.
Cool.
What would be the amount of people available that are certified through the court to, if you came up with somebody who spoke, in, in China, they have a lot of different dialects?
I have Mandarin, so I, I have a defendant who speaks Mandarin. Fortunately, there are a lot of Mandarin speakers, I have somebody who speaks Somali, and it's difficult to get a Somali speaker, but the, the plea agreement has to be written in English so that the judges and the lawyers can understand, but it needs to be translated into the defendant's language too, so they can read in their own language what it is. So, we need to find a Somali-speaking person who can also write in Somali.
Do they give a, would the state give a grant in some, that case, something like that?
Depending upon where we are money-wise, yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
$25,000, oh, same sign.
Doesn't matter, you can stay. I'm going to walk out.
Superior Court. It's like there's a decrease? Well, a total increase, but there is a decrease in there, the number's 217,914.
Move to approve?
Approve. Second.
Motion second, discussion? 217,914, just a slight increase of 1,000.
Did we sell for you?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
I do. Going to do Vasia as well, Jeremy?
What's that?
We're going to do Vasia?
Yeah, that's...
That's the next one.
Just looking for it, did I, there it is.
It was on my sheet.
So, yep, a guardianship grant, I was going to not try to say Vasia.
A move to approve?
Stack up.
There's a little bit of a decrease on the, the motion, the second to $60,000.
Yeah, that's probably because we asked for an increase last year at a certain point, but I think it's fine to leave it at 60.
Okay.
I don't recall, I know I came before you, maybe that was to properly appropriate the grant money, but in any case, if we need more, we can come back.
Yeah.
I think the grant will suffice.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, rolling, rolling. No, no, you...
Under screen, he's ugly as...
I don't know if there's any good baseball on, if you want to go, but...
Not good Packers.
Alright, here we go, Superior Court two, looks like there's just a little slight increase, we've got midpoints in there, a couple of little decreases, 195,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, seen and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you.
Have a good night, Judge.
Superior Court three, there is a couple increases, 19,673, contractual services is a $17,704 increase, the number is 306,181.
I'll move to approve to start the conversation.
Motion. Judge, I don't know, there's a motion.
Second.
Alright, we got some seconds.
So, I think you know what we're going to ask, what's the $17,000 increase for contractual services?
I sent a letter when I sent it in, but it's basically to give my Veterans Court case manager that I have been able to keep for the last four and a half years there, because she's valuable, and I can't keep anybody in drug court, my person left, and I can, with community corrections grant money, that can be adjusted, but this one, I'm just trying to make it competitive, because I haven't been able to fill the second position, it's been taken now for, I think, over two years, and trying to at least make it somewhat attractive, because it's a job where you're going to be there, you could be called seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and it's kind of an intense job at times, or it can be emotionally, emotionally intense, because you're dealing with a lot of different things, but...
So, this is a pay raise for somebody?
Basically, it's for a pay raise for Megan, what I'm trying, was what I'm trying to do, and then for whoever we can finally fill that slot with.
It brings her up to mid?
But it's strictly for Veterans Treatment Court case management position.
Okay, so these are not for employees, these are for...
They're not my employees.
They're outside con...
These are PACT employees, and that's part of the PACT contractual service budget.
When you say...
At 85,000, that's what it was before, so it'd be increasing it 17,000 to kind of give them a pay bump.
So, you're going to pay it to PACT?
It's going to go to PACT, yeah.
Judge, when you say veteran court cases, are, were you talking about military veterans?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
Is there anywhere else you can put this in your budget? Do you have any line items that have money left over from this year that we can absorb some of that into another, another line?
This year, maybe my training education budget, because most of what I do is through court services, so I don't have, I didn't go to the National Drug Court Conference this year, so I have money, I have some money there, I think. Exactly what the amount is, I don't know.
Think they're pulling it up for us?
What, what's the thought here?
Training and edu...
What?
Training and education.
Just trying to...
And what the balance...
The lesson that's 17,000?
It's up to you guys, I mean, historically, you guys, the judges are very conservative, they don't ask for, they don't ask for a whole lot.
You started off this meeting telling us...
I get it, I get it, it's your guys' pleasure.
Now you're paying to go.
Your pleasure.
That's your choice, that's your choice, but I'm just saying, that's two different conversations we're having now.
Nope, our choice, I'm just telling you what my personal feelings as an individual council member is right now, yep. So, what are you guys doing here? Are you taking some money out of the training and education? Is that what we're doing? Is that what your thought is? I mean, is that what...
I'd like to see the individual for getting the extra money for the contractual services, primarily because, you know, my heart lies in regards to veterans, I believe they need all the help we can get.
So, who's, what, when, you said you haven't had someone hired for a while, who's been covering the job?
Megan has been covering, and not only was she covering there, she was also helping out in Restoration Court, and one of the drug court case managers was also helping out, Judge Buckley, in Restoration Court too, so I think, and this is my opinion, I think the, the extra workload they took on is kind of what, where the drug court person left, because it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of intense work.
Were you able to give her a little bit more money for that extra, or no? He was doing it for the regular salary?
No, she's doing it for her salary, so she was covering a lot of cases. And right now, and right now, our, our numbers are down, but we've got a lot of people, pipeline coming in, so it's going to get busy again.
She's doing that all in the eight-hour period, or whatever the hours is working?
She, yeah.
Wow.
What do you guys want to do here?
We already made a motion, you do what you want.
What was the motion?
Move to approve.
The 306, the total amount, 306,181? Motion a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good night.
Superior Court. Oh. The, um... Couple increases, midpoint, and then just $500 maintenance, the total increase is 2,400. Sync a motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion at 210,387, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you, Lisa, John.
We're not that bad, come see us once in a while.
Take care, man.
Superior Court six. Midpoint, little increase in legal, little decrease in liability, and full increase is $1,969, the number is 157,076.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I, I always like to see a, a number go down, I'm just always curious why. Just my nature, sorry.
My guess is, I don't know.
It says decrease in liability insurance.
Yeah.
You know, insurance is only going in one direction, as far as I've known, is up, so when it goes down, I go, yay, you know?
Because he's been on the bench so long.
Well, we'll go with that one.
Then the carriers or the underwriters thought he, policy could be less.
We'll take it. Thank you.
Was the motion a second? Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, second by motion carrier.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
4D Court. Couple decreases, the salary, FICAN, medical perf within... It was just for the midpoint? It's a big increase in, in perf, there's only an increase of 334 right now. Do you know why that's a lot?
I don't know. Looks like new figures, 19,551 per employee.
Missing something or not, I mean, like the raises are just 334 dollars right now.
My guess is that part of it's paid out of a fund, and it was calculated all this My guess is that part of it's paid out of a fund, and it was calculated all this fund, so that number could probably go back to like thirty-five, five. You get what I'm saying? That part of it is paid out of a different-
Yeah.
Fund. So, yeah, you could change that number back to thirty-five, five.
You talking, the thirty-four? Talking about medical life? Yeah.
Yep, so we use that for-
We'll just keep an eye on, yeah. Are we good with that number?
Two fifty, two nine sixty-six.
Seventeen, seven, ten. We got seventeen, seven, ten. Okay, check mark. So, two fifty, seven, twenty-six.
So, there's two hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars is the-
It's not better than two fifty-seven.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six is the number. Going once? Going twice?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Alright.
Thank you.
I'm just trying.
Nurses out.
Just trying to-
Check some pulses here.
I'm just trying to figure out how we went, but.
I, I don't, well-
I'm go- I'm all good if it's going down.
So, yeah, it was probably just calculated on full amount and not someone being in a separate.
Alright.
Well.
Is motion a second at the number? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Alright, um, set myself up. Cent of, what do we got? Where's that number?
I make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
Eighty, eight thousand, seven hundred, is that right? Same number? Motion?
Second.
Second.
Second, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Circuit Court, am I flipping over? Circuit Court General Fund? You're welcome. Have a great night.
Oh.
That was-
Wow.
That increased, uh-
Where are we, though?
We're in Circuit here.
Hello, hello.
These sunshiny faces.
Yeah.
We sure are.
Yeah.
So, there's an increase of forty-two thousand
Wow.
Two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Midpoint in salaries, a healthy jump in hourly, dumping psychiatric services, couple of increase, dumping consultants, increase in toxology lab.
You've been busy.
Discussion? Twenty-six thousand dollars an hourly.
Is that because we're having more cases, or is it because more people need to be brought to midpoint?
No.
No.
For discussion yet.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Please.
That's why I have.
Make sure. Okay, so, we're asking for an increase in the hourly because we are in need of a part-time court reporter. Um, right now, we have the two full-time court reporters between the court and the circuit court. Um, the problem with that is that we also have three problem-solving courts, um, and we also have requests for multiple transcripts. So, whenever there's a transcript request, that is very time-consuming, consuming, and well, as it's a very strict timeline that we have to get those done. So, our court reporter has to leave the courtroom in order to get those done, um, which leaves us without a court reporter. Um, and so I, like I said before, between juvenile court, the circuit court, and three problem-solving courts, to have somebody who could go between the two courts, you know, well, three, four, five courts, would be really helpful. So, what we are requesting is the increase in the hourly in regards to pay for a part-time. We're not asking for a full-time position because we know that that would be a hardship. Um, so, what we would like is for that to happen.
The number of appeals that we have had in my court has been through the roof. So, I mean, I would say we've had seven, seven, like, in a, you know, some that came in within a week of each other, and there's one person, and so, we've been having to, like, you know, try to hire out. I mean, it's just been insane, and, you know, it's kind of not even showing signs of slowing down, to be honest, a little bit. So, we're a little stressed, but we wanna keep our, our court business going, and people have a constitutional right to a jury trial, and they have a constitutional right to an appeal. And so, we're just trying to keep that, that moving, and so, this would give us a little bit of a- And, um, you know, if we find that the numbers are going down, we're finding that we don't need that, you know, we can, we can reevaluate. It's just right now, it's been really brutal.
And then we would want the one forty-four to reflect the court reporter, um, for a pay of up to twenty-eight dollars an hour.
So, that would give us an as-needed ability.
Is, is that how court report, I mean, does somebody that's a part-time court reporter, they know, hey, this week you might work five hours, next week you might work two hours, or i- is that how?
That person would.
Yeah.
That's how, that, that would be the understanding for that person.
Okay.
That they could just, and, and, you know, there are people that are tired or semi-retired who still like to do, dabble in it, and, you know, not work full-time. This would be a perfect fit. They, they get a little something extra, but yet, it's totally helping us out too, so, yeah.
Okay.
Would you like me to move on with the psychiatric?
Yeah, yep.
All that?
Yeah.
So, we are in need of, um, some funds to be allocated towards that line item. Unfortunately, there has been an increase in the need for psychosexual and psychiatric evaluation.
I don't know if you guys have read the papers. Lots of, lots of child molesters, lots of rape things, lots of them. And if we wanna have a psychosexual evaluation so that we know better how to sentence these people, um, those cost some bucks. So, that would even probably account for two, but, um, at this point, you know, we're not ordering them, and that's something that, you know, we're trying to figure out after they're on probation, and putting that burden on PACT through their programs and on our probation. So, this would be something that could give us a little more insight on what is going on with this person, and it gives us a cushion for a couple of those.
Does this person talk to both of the individuals involved, or just the person that's accused of, or whatever?
Accused.
Accused, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, didn't know how that worked.
Yeah.
Um, in regards to consultant line item, we need an increase of a thousand dollars. There is a license cost for our juvenile database system called Quest, um, that will be going into effect next year, so that will, uh, help pay for the, the cost of those licenses next year. Um, in regards to toxicology, um, that is needed to be raised. Um, I know we asked for a reduction last time in order to help the general fund. Um, we do need to go back up again with that. We did get a new lab provider, um, and although it's a little bit more, um, cost to use this new provider, the, the responsiveness from their staff, the quick turnaround for the drug screens, um, the training that we receive is just valuable. Um, so, we just, we already ran out of funds for this year under, um, the judge's general fund, um, and now we're supplementing it with other accounts in order to get us through the end of the year. So, uh, increase of four thousand dollars, that line, and we're really aiding that.
And we, you know, we have the teen drug court, um, our problem-solving court. So, in addition to just routinely checking if needed for probation people, um, on our problem-solving courts, if we have juveniles or parents who we feel like we need to test, um, it doesn't matter if it's a teen drug court, it could be the truancy court, it can be the mental health court. We're using these drug tests if we feel that they're important to monitor these parents and kids, and it, it's using it up a little more rapidly, so.
And we do drug tests, our drug court case at least two to three times a week. So, and if we have a parent, we're at least testing weekly.
How much have you used out of the furniture and fixture, over a hundred?
I am not sure, Sylvia. I'm not sure. I think we've used quite a bit, actually.
Yeah, I know that we just ordered a bookcase and a desk, or part of a, uh, we've had some of those braising desks for someone. I, I don't know exactly what the number is right at this moment for that.
Showing that.
They've spent fourteen hundred out of their five thousand.
Okay.
And that's obviously without including new invoices that could-
Right.
And that's not including something else you've ordered?
Right.
I'd like to go back to the psychiatric services that, um, with that opt-in money from the Health Department. I'm picking on you guys over there, but can that be individual? Because one of the areas we have to cover, if I'm not mistaken, is the, uh, including something in regards to psychiatric health. An individual who, if they are hired through that with money from the state, what exactly, we're looking for that type of individual, could they help with your particular area, uh, that is needed in regards to psych and?
So, this is really an evaluation to just, um, assist us with knowing how to manage and treat, so when more, it's not gonna be treatment money, or it's not gonna go to the victim, it's going to the, the defendant to kind of assess what kind of services does this person need? Um, like, how deep in the weeds is he with, or she, I'm sorry, with whatever the issues are?
That be for sentencing?
Well, I mean, it would be ideal. I, I mean, it, it, you can do it at pre-trial levels.
Okay.
You know, you could do it at, but you don't, at pre-trial level, they haven't even been convicted yet, so you don't wanna sink a bunch of money into that at that point, but it'd be ideal at, like, before sentencing. Um, it's time-consuming, it's expensive, there aren't lots of people around here who do it. Um, so, that's kind of where, but it's so important. I mean, I think it's-
What have, what have you done up till now?
We, what we do is we go ahead and, and do without that, and then we sentence, and we have them go through programs where they do some evaluations and things like that, but it's after the fact. Um, and then they're monitored and things like that, but this psychosexual evaluation would kinda give the judges a better idea, like, what this person's all about, like, how-
And you're talking-
Pervasive.
Putting everyone through that one, every-
We, we couldn't even put everybody through that. That's why I'm saying, this would probably cover two or three people, but it's still better than nothing. So, that's why it, with the number of people we've been seeing, I mean, that number could be-
That's what I'm thinking. This, we're starting a line item that's going to build. I look that as, it's going to be more expensive every year, which, and it's, it's needed, as you said. And to get the people that, that will be able to do this work, is it around here, is that right?
I, I mean, I think that there are some, it's not, there aren't a lot of, uh, there's not a, there's not a lot of people out there that do it. You've, and you, you have to get good quality people, obviously. You know, so, it's, it's a little tricky.
So, is it, Brett had a good question, though. Is it, is that gonna be for potentially to be used during a trial, or is it just?
No. No, it's not for a trial. It would be used, it would be used to, like, say the person was convicted, and now we gotta go to sentencing, say the person pled guilty, and now we're gonna go to sentencing. It'd be done at some, it'd be done to help shape the sentence, or to-
An assessment for treatment.
Right. Yeah.
For people that haven't had this done, does the jail then pick up the slack? I mean, because obviously, these people need some kinda helper services or something, right? Is it, I mean, someone committed a-
So, let-
Something bad, and, and-
I have-
Somebody to talk-
I understand what you're, I think I understand what you're saying. So, so, I've had a couple of, um, I just did two sentencings yesterday for, um, child molesters, and in both of their sentencing orders, I ordered them to the Department of Corrections and said that they can participate in the sexual offender management and monitoring program that they have. It's called the SOM program that's contained in the Department of Corrections. Um, so, that's something that the Department of Corrections does to try to address some of that when they get out. You know, if you're on probation, then you go, you can go to the Project Pro pro, program in the PACT office, and they will monitor and tie it together with, uh, um, polygraph testing, um, to make sure that you're not doing things you shouldn't be doing. Um, so, those are the kinds of things. These are really just, when you have a, when you have a person that you feel like you could have some extra benefit by just knowing a little more deep information about them, that would give us that ability. And I don't know that I'd have to use it on every single one. You know, I, I don't, I wouldn't be able to anyway, but I think that would just give us a little cushion.
That's my question. You're, you're starting out with six thousand, you're not gonna be, how many do you think, uh, you would cover with that? Two, three?
Maybe three, if, if we're fortunate, but probably more like-
And how many comes through your system that might need that?
More. But, but that's why I'm saying, we are coming here just to see if we can-
To start.
Maybe, yeah, if we find a particularly egregious case or something that we-
Throw every-
Do you ever find, I mean, this may sound odd, but does a defense lawyer ever do this for their client? Like, if this is beneficial to the individual that's gonna be sentenced, wouldn't it be, I don't know, beholden upon that lawyer to say, it's my job to help you, so I'm gonna get these services done so that the information could be presented to the judge so that for sentencing might be a little bit lenient? Or am I in some la-la land that, that they would never do that?
Well, th- there's a difference between an assessment and the treatment. So, this is just, this is just, like, digging through details of this person's, um, life and psyche and history and things like that, so that, uh, an informed, educated person who's qualified to speak on these things can then produce something that, uh, a report for, for the court or for probation, that would also be used for probation to help us and guide us on what kinds of things that I should be ordering when I sentence him, you know, or her. So, that's, that's where it helps.
Kind of a deeper dive, give you a better understanding.
Right.
I, I think I need to watch this guy and-
Right.
Put him on-
Right.
A tighter leash.
Yes.
My concern is, we should be, we're going to start this program. We should put lots of money in it.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're gonna use it.
Mm-hmm.
Whoa, Sylvia.
I'm, 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 I am telling you what the facts are here, folks.
Yeah.
We're starting a line item that is going to need money all the time.
I say, no longer.
So, the psychiatric services, I think in the past, has been used for competency exams and things like that. So, it's not, I don't think we're adding a line item. We're adding more money to it, or?
We used to have-
Didn't have it last year.
We did not, because we gave it back. It was only like fifty dollars at that point.
Yeah, and, and so that, you know, we were using it for, I mean, for competency exams and things like that, you know, th- that kinda money comes in handy. This is, this is just something that I sat down with, uh, our, one of our probation officers who handles the sex offenders, um, on probation, and, you know, we were just talking about the importance of psychosexual evaluations, and I'm like, uh, I don't get to do those. I mean, you know, so we, that prompted the discussion, which prompted me to talk, you know, with my staff about how we can integrate that in, or at least start to. And maybe it's a, you know, I kinda feel like this could be a trial balloon to try and see what we can do with it, see, you know, how they, how that works, you know?
And, and I'm not saying that it's not necessary.
Oh, I, I-
Very, very much a part of your program. Have you talked with the Health Department at all about the psychiatric area of your, um, I'm wondering if we should-
You know, Sylvia, the, I, I just, I normally wouldn't chime in, but I, the psychosexuals are pretty, uh-
Specific?
Yeah, it's a specialized area, and I don't think the Health Department budget, even with the increased monies from the state, would cover-
Cover it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
So, it's gonna be huge.
Well, I, 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 I just don't, I, all I would say is, is I don't know if that Health Department line item, or any line item from the Health Department for the added money would cover a psychosexual evaluation, just because they're a very specialized, uh, provider, and so, I mean, just-
And these wouldn't be in all cases. These would be in-
No.
The way I'm looking at this, this would be, you have a defendant, and you, and you're kind of, in your mind going, okay, he's from six to ten. You have him analyzed, and they come back, and you read the report, and you go, oh, wow.
I thought I know-
They're, they're, this, this is deep.
Right.
Right?
And, and honestly-
That's how I'm looking at it.
Sylvia, absolutely. And, and, you know, you, you're, you keep repeating that this is gonna be a big thing. It's only as big as you all allow. You know, and so, that's why we're saying six thousand dollars, that's a good start. Let's just, and I'm not even saying we're gonna be here every year, asking to build on it. I don't know. I haven't had the luxury of having the money available to order these. So, if we had a couple for the most egregious cases, um, you know, it's just something, it's a, it's a trial for me to be able to, to use to do a better job. I, I, between the three high felony courts, for some reason, I feel like disproportionate numbers of the sex cases just randomly get assigned to me by God's will or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, but I get a lot of those, and so, it would be using those for what I- But, but I get a lot of those and so it would be using those for what I perceive in my experience to be maybe the worst of the, of the worst, to get a really good handle on what that person's about so that I can more accurately sentence this person. So that's why I don't want you to go, oh, they're going to be here every year and next year it's going to be forty-two thousand. It's not like that. I just, we felt like we needed to at least address that. And you're right, I think that there could be more, but we're just trying to, just get that, just have a couple of.
Where do we stand?
So, so if we approve that, then basically, then you'll, you'll sit back and say, these are the type of cases that will be indicative of this kind of scenario?
I will have to because I have probably a choice of two. You know, I probably could get two. So it would be in my mind looking for those really bad, bad ones so that I can have the best information before me when I'm ruling on it.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, there's a twenty-six thousand dollar increase, you heard that too with court reporter, right?
Oh, now that was part-time.
Correct.
Yeah.
Part-time, why, why the increase in appeals? I mean, or, or?
People have gone to trial and haven't fared so well and want to challenge it. Yeah, that's all, I, I don't have an answer. I mean, we've got, I, I do a bazillion plea agreements, but I went through a little stretch where I had, you know, a rape case, a murder trial, a child molester case, all within like two and a half months. And so all of a sudden those appeals are coming in at the same time. And some of our public defenders like to order every single hearing, Mr. Harper. Every single hearing in the case and so, you know, and they're entitled to do that. But it's just, they, when they lose, they, there's no downside for them to appeal because they're big nasty cases and they're getting lots of years. So, you know, I'm doing what I feel like I need to do and they're doing what they feel like they need to do to challenge it. So that's what's happening.
It's something that's needed.
So do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion, a couple seconds, further discussion. I mean, is there more trials going on right now than, than in years?
Oh, yeah.
You guys are busy.
Yeah.
Is it people aren't pleading, they're getting the.
I don't know.
Not good lawyers out there that think?
There's a lot of, we're not going to trial on some of these lower felonies, we're going on all these big hairy ones. The rape, the murder, the child molest, you know, we're doing that, you know. That's not even counting the civil cases, you know. We had a civil case last week where there was a plaintiff's verdict and over a million dollars. My guess is the other side's good people, you know, because you have that right. So, you know, we're just trying to do what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay.
Alex, I, I said a question on, I'm going to go back to the toxicology.
Yeah.
For a second, that increase, how much do we pay for drug, drug tests? Are we outsourcing that? Is that?
We outsource that.
We outsource it?
We do.
How much per drug test?
I don't have, I do not know.
About how much? You say we're doing some three times a week?
Uh.
For the same offender?
Number twenty, twenty-two to twenty-three.
Don't, don't pull me to that.
Yeah. Yeah, low twenties per test.
But that, that pays for not only the initial screening, but then if it's dirty, which is a much more expensive test.
So do we send out every positive?
Absolutely.
We don't, we don't use our in-house, if they test positive in-house?
No.
That isn't good enough?
No.
It has to be.
Devices aren't super reliable.
Okay.
Yeah.
What if the person, what if the person agrees with the test and says?
I wish they would.
Or do you not do that?
They, we'll give, we'll, they'll have super triple, quadruple confirmation and they'll say.
Yeah, I mean, what?
Not mine.
It was second.
Yeah.
Yeah, or something, so, yeah.
Act of God.
Yeah.
And we have to have that, that, that secondary confirmation, especially if we're going to do any type of sanction on a kid or if we're even looking at incarceration. So you definitely want that secondary confirmation with the GCMS confirmation.
I think your letter, so you just changed providers?
We did change providers.
Is this, was it cheaper or more expensive?
We, it is, it was more expensive, here's why though. We were waiting and waiting and waiting and waiting on drug, drug result, uh, drug test results. And we have kids sitting in detention, waiting to figure out like are they, you know, is it positive or negative? And they're sitting and we're waiting and waiting tests. And so no matter what we were doing, it wasn't, it wasn't expediting anything. They weren't making us a priority and, you know, so it, it, these are things that if we want to do a good job, it's kind of like kicking a puppy. I guess you don't kick a puppy, fink a puppy. Think I'm a puppy here. I love puppies, but, but, you know, it's kind of like, you know, punishing after the fact when you, you know, instead of doing it contemporaneously and making it more impactful when you can catch them right there and just take care of the sanction right there, it, it helps us.
Are these all, are these, are these all court ordered drug tests? We have to test the same person so many times?
These are our prom solving court kids as well as our probation kids. So we utilize the fund for, for all the kids in the juvenile justice systems.
They have to be tested, like you said, three to some.
Our proms.
More than that a week?
Kids, that, that is evidence-based practice, that if you want to stay on top of a kid's drug use and their dependence, you have to do continuous drug screening. So there is a new lifetime. And you also have to do it randomly as well, so they can't, you know, figure out when they're going to get tested next. The other thing about the drugs testing is that, I mean, for the safety of the child. If we're waiting, you know, over a week for a drug test, we're, we're thinking that this kid is using meth or they're using cocaine, waiting a week is not a good thing, especially if you're looking at the safety of the child, you just can't. So with the new provider, we're getting confirmation within about twenty-four hours for negatives and within forty-eight hours for positives.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, motion second on the floor, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign.
One down, thank you.
Grant, circuit court grant, twenty-two hundred, increase of a thousand dollars, seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
How much this grant will cover it?
Yes, absolutely. It's our APD fund.
Further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Family, family and child grant.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Same number, ten thousand dollars, five, motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign, family court donation.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Bring up something real quick on this one. I need a one forty-four change on this one in regards to adding the bailiff to the one forty-four at a rate of pay of up to twenty-five.
Wait, say that again.
Add to one forty-four for this one, bailiff of a salary of up to five dollars. I don't believe that is currently.
I wonder what might, I don't know. Couldn't have.
Is it? Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Motion a second at thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post same time. Is that it?
Till you get to me.
You're smiling, we're not.
No, you're not.
Juvenile detention. All right, turn the page. Looks like there is an increase of a hundred thousand dollars, one hun, one hundred, six thousand twenty-six. The JDC general fund.
And that's just due to getting them up to midpoint, correct?
No.
Yep.
No new people, it's just.
That's.
Your food and groceries went down.
However.
I, I do have a question.
Did you talk to the sheriff?
Wait, hey, your groceries went down? Oh my goodness.
What do we?
What I will say, that's not what I requested, no. I requested a very, a bigger increase in my salaries this year.
Why isn't it?
Yeah, oh, for food and groceries.
Food and groceries, it went down six thousand dollars.
Well, what we did was what, last year we carried over, because sometimes when we have extra funds in other areas, if we're getting a little bit.
Okay, good.
Grocery, we switch it from another line item into our food and grocery. Normally we stay on budget, but last year we just said we're a little bit over, but I don't need all of that again.
Thank you.
How much?
Thank.
Did your garden help with that? I'm curious.
It does.
I mean, you know.
The tomatoes in the salads for the kids, we've been doing herbs in the garden, we've been doing all of that.
No, they, they do all the tilling as opposed to, mentioned during the sheriff, some organic farmer come by and do that for them. But, you know, they do all this on their own, right? And so this, they see the effort that they put out and everything, so that's a positive thing there. And it does help with the lowering of the, your food bill here, let's call it that. Is it substantial enough to, I mean, maybe carry it over to the sheriff's department? I'm just curious.
Suggestion. I'd like to ask, did you get a, want an answer on that? On, on consultants, they've gone up a little bit, what's the story on that?
That one again is in regards to the license increase for our database class.
Oh, okay.
Like I previously noted. And then toxicology, again, the same reason that I previously. There are free mandatory probation salary increases, the dreaded mandatory probation salary increases that are on there, that equals fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six. So of that, the consultants and the toxicology, I'd be requesting an eighteen thousand, four seventy-six increase between the mandatory probation increases, the consultants and the toxicology. But in my letter to you all, I did ask for a substantial raise in regards to our detention officers, if I may be able.
Yeah, does anybody got any more questions on, on, on what's in front of you with these changes?
General fund.
Was the detention director increase that state mandated?
Yes, it is.
They got a big raise.
I did.
So were those mandated ones in there?
A mandated one? No.
All right, so we'll have to make a note to put those in there.
The mandated ones? They're reflected on this paper.
Are they, are they reflected in the?
They're with the one forty-four.
Yeah, they're not highlighted though.
They're not highlighted though, but they are, there's increases there that are not highlighted.
All right. We'll have to put the mandated ones.
So you have them in there.
So anybody got any further questions on this? All right, yeah, you guys, she had a, so we took, you know, for the most part, took all the requests out. We left the, the midpoints in there. And I know you've got a, a sale, a story you want to tell, so have at it. Now's the time of what's not in there.
So I sent this out earlier to all of you, I don't know if you, I have copies for everybody if you didn't.
I think they're all in here. But this, that letter?
Oh, what?
There's a letter and there's some, yeah, there's some, there's cross comparisons.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, there's a letter in here.
There's a letter and some cross comparisons in there, passing out.
Oh, there's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, talking about increased salaries for our detention officer staff, the wage study was such an important task and we were so appreciative of that. However, it also did shine a light in regards to discrepancies between some employees, particularly our detention officers compared to jail staff. If you look at the spreadsheet that I sent you, it shows you the differences in pay in regards to jail staff compared to detention staff. It shows different job duties, education and training, salary, salary comparisons. Of course, I really want to make sure you understand that I am not trying to diminish or downplay the role of jailers whatsoever, far from it. They play a vital and very important role to our criminal justice system and they face dangers every day, just like we do. However, I just, I feel like I need to point out the differences because we deal with very different populations. And we have to have specialized training and techniques that are vastly different when you're dealing with youth compared to adults.
More hands-on, isn't it?
Huh?
It's more hands-on, basically.
No, actually, no.
Really?
No, we try not to go hands-on with youth because actually that's very dramatic.
No, not literally.
That's not what I meant.
Oh, hands-on in regards to working with the kids.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
No, no.
So one of the, some of the things I did want to point out in regards to some of the glaring differences is that unlike, unlike our jail counterparts, our staff does not carry chemical agents. We don't have tasers, we don't have body armor, so we don't have that for production. And this is in line with the recommendations of the Department of Corrections facilities standards for youth. Instead, our staff is trained in verbal de-escalation, physical hold techniques designed specifically for youth. And although these are effective, the increased high rate of youth coming into our center with significant mental health issues, we further had to create a hands-on behavior program where staff does work with youth through therapeutic learning activities, accountability lessons, the use of a sensory room to process traumas, and also use verbal de-escalation and use of physical, in lieu of physical interventions. Although the changes have culminated in lower rooms of rate, room confinement, confinement and physical aggression, our staff does continue to have a very highly hazardous work environment. We still do have to go hands-on here and there. And again, unlike our jail counterparts, we don't have body armor, we don't have tasers, we don't have the chemical agents that they have the ability to use. Another point I do want to make is that our full-time officers must have a bachelor's degree. And most of our degrees in experience in psychology, social work and criminal justice, which is very vital to the population we work with. Jailers have to have a GED in high school to pull them. Our staff also must complete a hundred and sixty hours of training within their first year of being on the, the floor and then forty hours continuing training and education annually thereafter. Also, our staff also has to perform daily educational and recreational duties, hands-on with the kids. We have to perform regular court and out-of-center transports, we have to aid the youth in daily hygiene duties. We perform daily secure facility cleaning, we clean the whole secure area ourselves. And we also have to do resident laundry. So, I mean, there's a lot of other things that our counterparts, that counterparts at the jail don't have to do. And again, although the argument can be made for these differences justify that detention officers could and maybe even should make more than our jail, jail counterparts. Of course, I'm not going to make that argument because I do understand the general fund can only handle so much. And what I'm just asking for at this point is for parity and not making more than what our jail counterparts would do. Another thing I want to point out is that it is, we are having a really hard time recruiting and retaining staff. We just really are. I'm down two full-timers right now, I need a multitude of part-timers. Can't keep them, I'm going to be down four full-timers probably by the end of the month because I just got another resignation. You know, we're spending hours and hours of training these people and then they leave because they rather go to another job that they're making a lot more money and it's not a dangerous situation. So of course they're going to go. So we can't, we can't pay them enough. So in order to have parity between the departments, I calculate that on current staffing levels, a raise to detention officers and supervisors would cost approximately a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then I did have the, the salary comparison in your spreadsheet there. And then on top of that, I would want to also request with no increase to, within the hourly line item, increase the hourly rates for our teacher to up to twenty-five dollars an hour, detention officer up to twenty-five an hour, our cook up to twenty dollars an hour, clerical up to twenty-four, and our bailiff up to twenty-five. So again, we have to retain people, we just can't keep people.
And those, they put those in there, correct, the hourly, reflective in the one forty-four right now, the increases.
Alex, I'm gonna ask, you mentioned that, you know, looking at the comparison that the officers at your agency, they don't carry type of, I guess you would call a less than lethal. Is there a reason for that? Why?
Theo standards for youth.
Well, they're not allowed to.
We can use chemical spray, however, the standard is written as such that it is extremely difficult to do it because you have to weigh and if there's a diversion, there's really structured protocols. The Department of Correction really, they don't want you to, they do not. And frankly, in regards to our therapeutic means, in regards to working with youth, really don't want to unless you actually have to. So we've chosen not to. But in regards to tasers and body armor and things like that, no, we can't do that. Also, we can't use restraint boards, we can't use, you know, five-point restraining, we can't do certain things that you can within.
So if you get hired as a officer at JDC, you know that going in, you're not going to be able to have.
Correct.
These tools available to.
Correct.
So that comparison is kind of, I mean, you go in as a jailer, you know you're going to have access to pain and with those types of tools.
Right.
So there's a difference there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm just curious, when they did the payroll study, why isn't? I'm just curious, when they did the payroll study, why isn't this, what you're suggesting right now, reflected? Why, is, they didn't compare you to the jail, correct? They compared you to other juvenile detention service units around us, is that how it worked, or?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that happened, I wasn't, I'm not familiar with what they compared us to.
Is this something that you've kind of looked at, where other juvenile detention officers in other counties similar to ours are being paid pretty much the same as the jail?
I didn't look at the centers, I looked at what we do locally, because I'm gonna be really honest, our center is very different than other centers in the state. We are probably one of the most hands-on facility in regards to therapeutic interventions with youth. Our ability to handle mental health cases, um, based upon using like trust-based relational interventions with our youth, working through their traumas, things like that, um, is vastly different than the other eighteen facilities in the state. So comparing, um, apples to oranges really didn't make sense to me, to be honest with you. There are some facilities that's, that make more than us, um, and there are some facilities make far less than us. So it's, it's very, it's different populations to look at. What I looked at when I gave you these numbers is strictly to look at what our jail, what we're paying locally, and what our jailers are making locally compared to what our detention officers are.
So how many offenders do you typically have in your facility that are being supervised by these officers?
Typically, our average deadly population is thirteen to fourteen, however, we get twenty-four.
And how many officers do you have working at a time to oversee?
We have five on shift.
Four to five?
Four to five.
And also the offenders are from Porter County?
A lot of them. We do have contracts with three counties, Stark, Newton, and Jasper, so sometimes we do have them. Um, and we have held for federal, um, which has been interesting. But, um, but we do hold federal kids as well. But the majority of the kids that we have in our center are Porter County.
And when that happens, do we get money from those other counties, or?
We do.
Curious, and the federal?
We do.
Is there a certification that your officers go through? I know the jailers go through a certification.
No, um, detention officers used to go through a state, um, training, but that went on the wayside because they didn't get updated. We have, again, a, a very robust, um, training of, like I said, of the, um, hundred and sixty training hours that they have to get in within their first year. The Department of Correction also has very structured topics that we have to train our officers on, whether a detention officer, a supervisor, or an administrator. Even our clerical, our cooks, and our nurse, and our therapists also have to go through different types of hourly training for the Department of Correction that we do follow.
Thanks.
Any further discussion, questions? It's a big act in front of you. Don't believe we're gonna take it up tonight. Right now, there's already been into this, uh, you know, a hundred and nine thousand dollar raise. Staff midpoint, so. Anything else you want to add for us to consider going into the final reading?
No.
Any further questions? Alright. So just with the, the midpoint raises in there, there's a decrease with all the other ones, some deductions, an increase of a hundred and six thousand and twenty-six dollars. The bottom line is one million nine hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-two.
You've got a motion.
I do not.
I'll take, I'll give it a motion.
Motion second.
Second, couple seconds, clear discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. You got, um, uh, two weeks to.
We'll discuss it in two.
So, uh, what do we got, juvenile probation?
One more.
Juvenile, is that where we're at? Juvenile detention codes, I, I went right over. Sorry. There it is. Looks like there's a decrease. Twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. Total is seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
I make a motion, Mr. President, we prove it.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, six, five, I say aye.
Aye.
O, same.
He's out this one. Thank you.
Alright.
Have a good night.
Juvenile probation. Some increase, there's the midpoint, fifty-one thousand, fourteen dollars, like hourly increase, consultants increase, be the flavor of the day there, uh, I think that's it right now, right? In the, um, general fund.
Are there state mandated raises in here?
Yes, and with your permission, I'll go ahead and go through each of these if that, that works for you. Okay, so, uh, there's a total increase of two hundred and four thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, uh, dollars that we're requesting. A little bit over half of that, a hundred and five thousand four seventy-one, uh, reflects the state mandated raises for the minimum salary schedule. So the judicial conference did institute for twenty-twenty-four, uh, a seven point eight percent increase over the twenty-twenty-three salary schedule. Uh, and this has been the first major, uh, restructure since the minimum salary schedule was instituted in two thousand and two. Certainly, you're aware, they've given us cost of living increases over, uh, the years for most years. But the increases haven't kept pace with inflation, uh, or other professions that do require a bachelor's degree, which probation does. So that's, that's the, the larger increase that they've kind of made, made that increase. So again, a hundred and five, four seventy-one, those mandated, uh, increases.
Wait, what? We're talking about the general fund right now, right?
Yes.
I don't see that hundred and five number.
No, it wasn't in there, we didn't put the state mandated in there, well, it'll be added.
There's no state mandated, because there, okay, then that's what's confusing, so like probation officer, probation officer Lesniak is not highlighted, and he goes from fifty-five to fifty-eight, so I would assume that's a state mandated raise, is that not?
Yes, any, any raise that any officer is getting is state mandated, and they're just the minimum, uh, requirements for that.
So my comment would be then that this is reflecting state mandated raises?
No, you're probably.
Or partially?
State mandated came in like in June or July, or, I'm thinking of a different.
Can you guys let me know, please, is, is it partially in here?
So that was one of the things I was gonna bring up was Lesniak and Gonzalez, both need to be taken back to their twenty-twenty-three numbers. And then that would reflect for everything else, just the bottom three, I believe that got moved to the midpoint.
So then on top of that, you would have state mandated raises as well?
On top of.
The midpoint, because the midpoint to them doesn't mean anything, right? Because their state mandated control pay.
Correct, so for everything to reflect correctly for us and us to all stay on the same page is where we were going, we just needed to take probation officer Lesniak and Gonzalez's raise back down, and then we can deal with that on the twenty-fourth.
And then you'll tell us on the twenty-fourth what those state mandated raises are. Do you know now how impactful that number is, is it big?
Yeah.
Well, you just said a hundred and five thousand, didn't you?
Yeah, oh, that's the number.
Yeah.
Yeah, all those, that's the, okay.
So a hundred and five plus the sixty-seven, five fourteen? Oh, okay, thank you.
It's the same thing with juvenile, we're gonna have to add those state mandated in, because.
For everybody to get their minimum salary schedule, it would be a hundred and five, four seventy-one is what I have.
So when we get a number at the end of the night and it says, this is what we hit the general fund, like it was a million last week, that number's not gonna include any of these stands, okay, thank you, that's all I need.
Okay. Then the next request that we did have is for two additional probation officer positions for twenty-twenty-four. We're requesting those at the, at the minimum, uh, required amount of forty-one thousand seventy-nine. So if the council was to, to grant that, it would be eighty-two, one five eight for the two positions. We've had no new officers added to our department since twenty thirteen. Um, and there's been considerable changes in the last ten years, uh, for what the state requires of probation officers. They've instituted a risk and needs assessment, um, that is a, is a great assessment, it, it helps us establish, uh, where the youth, uh, are at risk and what their needs are for, for case plans, uh, but it is much more in-depth, uh, it, it takes more time to, to complete that, and so officers are spending more time doing those things. There's been, many of you are familiar with the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, JDAI. And that's, there's been expansion of that, whereas it's a, it's a statewide initiative, uh, to keep families intact by being less reliant on the detention center and out-of-home placements, uh, with the goal to provide services within the department and the local community. So we're, we're keeping our youth in the community, uh, not sending them out of state. And it's challenged the probation department to create effective programming within the department, and we've risen to that occasion. Over the last ten years, uh, we've developed a number of programs that are in-house, uh, and that are staffed with existing staff. And I'm, I'm happy to go over all those programs with you, uh, if you'd like, but, um, we're, we're at this point operating at maximum capacity. We witnessed significant increases in both, uh, violence and mental health referrals that are coming to our department. I'm sure the sheriff's department can tell you that, that they've seen that, um, and, and the prosecutor's office could probably tell you that. So it's really coming down to whether or not we're gonna be reactionary kind of posture versus being proactive, putting out fires proverbially, uh, or being, uh, preventive. And obviously, we want to be on the proactive side of that and preventive side of that. We're also, uh, facing pending changes to the Indiana probation standards. Now, Indiana probation standards are kind of the rulebook for probation officers and kind of spell out how things are done. Uh, the judge is on a committee, uh, for that, that's kind of been looking at different changes. Uh, and they're gonna be, uh, down the road calling for even earlier and more in-depth intervention for youth and families, entire families, um, as, as it comes down the road. So again, that's, that's positive, but, but when we have a youth in front of us with their family, if they have a younger sibling that's, that's, uh, dealing with issues and is at risk, they're wanting us to make referrals, uh, to, through the Department of Child Services to kind of help these family, uh, get services so they don't come to us at probation down the road. And again, a great, a great thing, but again, time-consuming for our officers. An approval of, of two additional officers would allow for more manageable caseloads for our officers. Uh, it's gonna permit more evidence-based, um, meaningful and proactive work with our medium and high-risk youth, and that's statistically where you see the greatest change, uh, is, is medium and, and high-risk youth. And it's gonna translate to enhance personal and community safety, uh, for, for Porter County. So that's why we're asking for those two additional officers. The next, uh, addition to that, uh, to the general fund is an hourly request. Currently, we have under hourly, a ninety-five hundred dollars at, up to twenty dollars an hour. We are asking for an increase of twenty-five thousand, uh, up to twenty-five dollars an hour. And that is, uh, to help support a part-time bailiff position that the juvenile court has. It was created in September of twenty-two, uh, to assist the juvenile court in the flow of cases, and to create added security within the courtroom. Currently, that bailiff position is being pieced together through various funding sources, some of which, uh, waver in their sustainability. So we're trying to kind of lock that in. And then finally, the only other change to the general fund is under consultants. Right now, it's funded at eighty-five hundred, we're asking for an increase of just a thousand dollars to ninety-five hundred. And that's because our, our case management vendor did increase their prices, and so we, we have to, uh, to pay those changes. And so that's, that's the changes to the general fund.
Alright, what's in front of you is the, well, the, those midpoints will come out, mandated raises will go in, so.
Wait, to clarify, so we're not taking them to midpoint, we're just gonna do the mandated? Or is it whatever's more, or how is this gonna be break, broken up?
You have to give them both, you have to give them what the county's given plus their state mandate.
Why do we have to give them both?
Ask the state.
No, what, what if, what if the mandated raises took them to the midpoint?
Well, I think.
I mean, just hypothetically.
But we don't have to give them a raise.
But you don't have to give them, or just give them those.
That's what I'm asking. I'm not saying we want to do that, I'm just trying to figure.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Eventually, you would have to take them to midpoint.
But if mandated raise, I guess my question is, is the mandated raises takes them to midpoint, then that's our, we've accomplished the goal, without anything coming out of the general fund.
Ask your attorney about that and review it, but it's my understanding, it has to, they're entitled to the county raise as well as the state mandate.
I, I don't, I.
We've not.
I don't, I don't think that's, I would disagree with that, but I would certainly be willing to look into that. I think if we, I, bring them to the state mandated, mandated level, and that's higher than what the raise is, then I don't think there's any obligation legally to add anything on top of that. But I certainly can look into it, I, just based on my understanding, I, I, I don't think we would have to add anything on top of that.
And nothing against.
But that's, but I, I will certainly look into that, though.
Because I guess, I can't think of other departments that have this mandated increase. Yeah.
It's juvenile and adult probation are the only two that have the state mandate.
Right.
So if the goal is to get our employees to midpoint, and with you having that mandated process, which is great, then that, we could use that one elsewhere, if, if that mandate.
Everyone else is already at midpoint except for three in that department. You're not saving them.
But we have to give the mandated.
You're gonna have to give this, because the other ones are already there. So you've got seven point eight for everyone else except for the three that are taking a midpoint.
Okay. Well, I would say, give them the state raises first.
Right.
And if they're not at midpoint, then they, we look at it at the last meeting, if they're at midpoint then, and/or above, then that's what they got.
You mentioned Lesniak, Kate.
I guess that's one of my former.
Yeah, I know, I, I, you explained it. Perfect. Ryan, I have a question though, real quick, just about one employee, I was just curious. Well, we, you're saying we're taking Lesniak from fifty-eight down to fifty-five, and Gonzalez from the fifty down to forty-one, why fifty to forty-one? Did I hear that correctly or no?
No, you heard that correctly, because that was the last year's salary.
I think they accidentally included a raise on him, Red. From what I gathered, they accidentally included a raise on those two people, that would happen. It's just paperwork.
State mandated or the midpoint on?
No, I believe that the fifty thousand one was the state mandated.
But I mean, in twenty-twenty-three, everybody was making between fifty and, I understand probably, you know, in the fifties, this guy was making forty-one, I was just curious where the discrepancy was, that's all, for Gonzalez.
Lesniak's a lady.
Maybe Gonzalez is newer? That, how, because it goes based on how long.
No, I, I can, I can see that, but it was just.
Oh, I don't know.
Everybody else was fifties, and then I guess it was ten thousand, I didn't know if there was a mistake there, that's all. So we'll have to figure that out, you guys. In final reading, I mean, I get it, they're mandated takes them to their midpoint plus.
Yeah, we don't need to.
No, those are seven. Would you say seven point eight percent raises, there's no way we're giving that out this year to the entire county? I wish we could, but.
I don't think in years past, it's, it's just been the state mandated raises and.
But you're getting it.
Whatever.
But you are getting a seven point eight percent.
Through the state.
The state, through state's mandating that.
Correct. Alright. Well, um.
Well, the state has lots of money, I heard.
So, yeah, um.
They do have lots of.
The number's gonna be off here, guys. With the salaries anyways, the fifty-one thousand four fourteen is the, um, the midpoint, but we've got to include the, um, the mandated raises, which is gonna be a hundred and five thousand four hundred and seventy-one, so. We're gonna have to, you know, change that, if you want to do that now, or just approve this number and adjust it in third reading, it's up to you guys.
Are we gonna do it?
Let's approve this now and adjust it at third reading.
Let's, I'm fine with that. You guys are taking good notes, so.
So we are giving them both?
No, right now, we're not even giving them the state mandated, so we're gonna have to flip, yes, but we have to give them the state mandated.
Right.
Just giving them time to fix it going into final reading. I mean, are you guys okay, so the hourly, I mean, are you guys okay with all of the other stuff? They're gonna have to flip-flop the, the salaries, so we're gonna approve a number that's not true, we're gonna take out the midpoint and add the state mandated, so.
My goodness.
They'll, they'll correct that. We don't have, Sylvia, we don't have to approve the, I mean, this number's gonna be different. Can't not give them the state mandated, we can.
No, I understand that. I do understand that.
Yeah, so.
So do we, do, can we do a motion to approve the state mandated raise tonight?
Yeah, we can do that, that's fine, the numbers, yeah, I mean.
You make that a motion?
I mean, I suppose we could do math real fast. Do you want to do the math real fast, you guys just fill the numbers right? Can you just take out the fifty-one thousand fourteen, add the hundred and five thousand four hundred and seventy-one? And whatever corrections we gotta do in final reading. Is that number right, $105,071? Is that what?
That was, that's minus mid-
Yes.
One.
Correct.
Yeah, I submitted the 144 on that, so.
Who else had a state mandated?
Yeah, he'd have 44,000.
Well, we've already announced, but I think it's final.
That would be your number then?
I was just-
Right. 94981.
$1,294,981. That includes the hourly increase, the consultant increase.
Correct.
Can we get a nurse up here? Make a motion, Jeremy. Is that a motion? We got a motion.
You got a motion?
We got a motion on the floor by Redstone. There's a second.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Further discussion? All in favor of the $1,294,981, signify by saying aye.
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 Sign. All right. And I know, flare is mine. You're asking for a couple more employees, so this stuff we'll have to consider at the end. So we'll figure out what we're going to do with the midpoints. That juvenile probation-
Administrative?
Administrative.
So there is an increase here. This is a non-general fund account. We're requesting that the 2023 budget figure of $7,564 be increased in 2024 to $17,828. This is a fund to help to pray the costs of salaries for probation officers. So there's three officers that are $5,000 each, so $15,000, that is not going to have to go into the general fund. And then the perf and FICA with that. So it's, again, total is 17,828.
You heard the number, 17,828.
Move to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. All right. Juvenile probation supplemental.
Yes, for the user fee fund. So we're requesting that the 2023 budget figure of $117,370 be increased in 2024 to $120,070. It's just an increase of $3,000. It's reflected in line item 3964 for toxicology lab. And price increases in the contract lab have necessitated the adding to that line item. Additionally, with the juvenile probation user fee, you have a part-time hourly on that as well. It's $10,000. That is not changing. We're not requesting that that changed, but just hourly rate, 20, up to $20 an hour to $25 an hour. So those are the only changes to that.
All right. That increase is very reflected in the 144. There's a number, $121,489. For juvenile probation supplemental, is that correct?
Correct.
I make a motion.
I just have a question for the, see what the council thinks. When we talk about these hourly, the hourly increases up, is this a range where, you know, it's going to be if a person does his job, they're going to make this much an hour? That wouldn't be a range. But do you have a range? Like, if you hire somebody new, are they going to start out at this hourly rate?
It allows us up to-
So it's up to this amount? There is a range?
We could go lower. It's up to, just in case we need to pay that much out of there.
Do you usually start out lower?
Typically, yes, yeah.
So you're increasing the top pay? It's not what everybody's just going to be-
So once that $10,000 is used up, whether it's paid at 25 an hour or 20 an hour, it's gone.
Okay.
There's a motion.
And a second, I believe, right?
I never heard one.
I'll second it. I got a second.
Didn't you make the motion? You can't second it too soon.
I'll second it.
I know you're trying to be-
Well, I'm trying to be-
Only one here, yeah.
I'll second it.
I thought Red-
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Start up.
Thank you.
Paying by motion.
Yeah.
Paying by attention.
Still here.
All right. Well, you get a lot of money, Sylvia. You're a participant. All right. Adult probation.
Can you guys tell us what we did on the pay for that? Is that, because I see there's a quote with raises in there. Is that already included, the state mandated raises? Is that what it is?
Sorry. No, those were just our notes that we had to go back out.
Well, I see on our sheet, there's raises on there. Like, the chief deputy, or the chief going back is going from 88 to 94. Assistant chief, 80 to 85. Know what?
No, they're not highlighted. He asked if they're highlighted in green. They're not highlighted.
Oh, they're not highlighted in green. So what are these increases?
Requesting those raises.
Why are these on here, though?
They're raises?
Right. It's my understanding, those are the raises you're requesting.
Those are the mandatory sellers.
Mandatory raises that were not inclusive.
So this will probably be marked in green.
Well, you'll have to ask Ryan how he handled it.
I'm confused, because some of them say raises, some of them say midpoint.
The sheets, I just said we're-
State mandated raises and-
Doesn't say. Those raises the midpoint.
So all these are state mandated raises?
Correct.
On top of the adult, the highlighted ones are the midpoints.
Yep.
It's on your sheet right there. So this is another one we're just going to have to, well, those don't have state mandated on the box.
The only thing is, the ones are in green at the bottom.
Are not state mandated.
Those are support staff. They're not.
So, gotcha.
But those are our midpoint, though. We're going to approve anyways.
So we're going to approve those anyways, and that should-
So this number's more accurate than our last-
Yeah.
We just covered. Not digging on them, just, it had nothing to do with you.
Thank you, Andy.
Well, I'm not digging on that, but they included the state mandated raises on this one. The juvenile detention, or probation did not have those in the figures.
No. This includes a state mandated.
Correct. When we submitted our budget, who did the state mandated raises?
Along with our up-to midpoint.
So that $120,000 reflects all of that, Ryan, right?
Correct.
The mandated and the-
I make a motion, Mr. President, we approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
I just have a question, and I guess I'm looking down. Why doesn't perf go up when the salaries go up?
It's a percentage. Oh.
But if the salaries go up, shouldn't perf go up as well?
Yeah.
I don't see perf going up. Well, maybe I do, and I'm not seeing it. No, I don't see it.
No perf in this department.
Not in this department, but again, it's going to be in one of the lower ones, right? Because there's perf under 2101 and 9164.
Yeah.
I know I'm skipping around, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around why perf isn't increasing.
Why it's not included?
Why it's not increasing. If we have raises on there, we're giving $120,000 a raise, and perf's based on a percentage of the pay. If we increase the pay, then the perf would go up, right?
Are we giving?
Are we going to find problems later? We may. That's what I mean, to-
Okay, this is the, we're talking about the general fund, correct?
We're talking about the general fund, right. But we're increasing salaries, and I'm just looking down, and I see perf listed below twice, and I don't see an increase. I see perf of zero, and then perf of 12,652 staying the same. And that's under the next page.
That's a different fund.
Where's perf paid for the salaries fund? Okay, if we're on the general fund right now, where does-
The fund is always, perf and FICA are paid out of the commissioners' budget.
That's, okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah.
Some motion and second, I believe. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. How about the fender, zero, zero, zero?
Make a motion.
Motion.
I'll second it.
No, is that wrong? What is that in there for?
Yeah, we don't have that on our-
Yeah, it's just a hold, it's just a hold over.
Hold over one?
Yeah, I saw zeros. I'm making motions.
Nothing to do there. Adult probation. All right. Going off sheet. It's all right, we'll work through it. New look.
Bye-bye.
Some new people, we'll work through it.
We're on adult probation supplemental?
Yep, adult probation supplemental. Looks like there's some raises in there, a little decrease. The number is higher because of the raises, which-
And that's on-
Should be midpoint.
I make a motion, Mr.-
473,226, motion.
Second.
Second. There's, no.
Tell us.
So the difference, the change to the supplemental budget is us asking for an additional officer with a salary of that 41,079.
That's an increase in a person or a midpoint?
That's an increase in a person. So we're going from zero, that's us asking for a new officer for 2024. So we're going from zero-
So we're taking that out?
So it's not a new person?
Okay.
Ryan, is that a, those midpoints, or is that, is that a new person? That's an increase of one new officer, that's, yeah, so.
So what are we going to do?
Take it out, that's what we've done. So you want a new, unless the state's forcing us. So, so we, and I don't know, um, you want to, you want to talk about it a little bit?
Yeah.
While you have us?
Sure.
Twist our arm? Tell us why?
Can I show you diagram to help?
Please.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
So what is in front of you? They are three charts that show the officer distribution within our office. So for over 10 years, we've not asked for an additional officer. In that time period, however, we've had significant increase in the amount of work that we're doing. And how we've taken that on is by redistributing the officers that we have available to us. So significant to us was in 2020, when the state instituted the pre-trial release program required throughout the state. What that did is gave us an additional division within our department, so an entirely new group of individuals that we had to take on for supervision. The way that we tackled that was we grabbed an officer from the probation supervision side, we grabbed an officer from our background investigation side, we used those officers to take on those additional supervisions. What's happened, though, is now we've seen an increase in the number coming onto supervision, both in the pre-trial program and on probation supervision. Additionally, we're seeing an increase in the number of background investigations that are being requested by the court. So we have maximized the use of the resources that we have available by moving people around. And now we're in a position that to take on that additional work, we'll need an additional officer. So what you're seeing on the bottom two graphs are what our supervision levels look like, the number of people that we are taking on for probation supervision. And then that bottom chart shows the number of background investigations that are being requested by the court. So when I say requested, they're ordered. We don't have an option. We have to do those. But it's caused an increase of about 40% in our workloads. That's why we're asking for an additional officer.
So the blue is the, what's your timer, right, the three, right?
So the blue is pre-trial supervision, so the number of new clients for pre-trial supervision, right. The orange is the number of clients being sentenced to probation or being, starting probation supervision for us.
What did PSI stand for?
Oh, I'm sorry. It stands for pre-sentence investigation. So those are the background investigations that we do that help a judge to decide what sentence is appropriate for an individual.
Thank you.
What do you guys want to do here?
Let's per square.
Pull it out? Did we pull it out for now?
Yeah, I pulled it out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So there's a motion and seconds. We check that motion and go back to 386, 897, correct?
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve 306,897.
Motion, second, for 386,897. Further discussion?
Is that, would that just be on the salary?
Yeah, you need to look at the line above it. The 432, 572?
Yep, that's correct. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you're right. You're right. Okay, I wanted to go take that out. I'm sorry. So 432, 572, right?
Yep, sorry. All right. Start over. For 432,147, that removes that one person at 41,079.
Second it.
Motion and second, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same sign. One more. All right. We got adult probation, community correction, pre-trial. Is that right? New speakers. $134,257.
President, I make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, further discussion.
Supposed to help us.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
All right. You have fun with me.
Come back on the final reading. Wave, throw things, email, call.
Thank you, guys.
There's a lot of-
Thank you. Have a good night.
Requests.
Good night, Judge.
All right. Prosecutor. Is that right? Where are we at? Forty?
Forty, prosecutor.
All right. I'm afraid to move right now. I'm afraid to say something. Andy will yell at me.
I've been very quiet this meeting.
Getting a little frisky over there.
Please identify your Andys.
Uh, increase of $25,552, is that midpoint? Midpoint?
I make a motion, Mr. President, we approve.
For $600,528?
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. General, forty incentives, eight, eight, nine, five.
I make a motion, we approve, Mr. President.
Is that the 1,000 number? Is that right?
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
Hundred.
Okay, I went with that four. Eight hundred dollars. I like that better. Motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same sign, that was the total amount. I was like, I didn't approve that. Yeah.
Didn't.
Oh, I'm a captain.
I didn't approve that one.
We good? Is that it?
That's it.
Do I got another one?
There were two that were done last week, too. I don't know how mine got separated.
Yeah.
I was here, so.
All right, all right.
Is that all then?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Have a nice evening.
All right, working through?
Yeah, we're good, there.
Some different views, stuff. We're good.
Fill in the seat.
All right, the corner. I thought we did you the other night.
Record.
Couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks.
Oh. All right.
So.
Well, I thought Red said, I don't, never mind.
One day, one day, Jeremy.
One day. So, um-
Not a hand.
Don't we wish?
Do you want me to explain first, or?
Sure, because it's, it'll take these guys another half hour to make a motion.
Unless you want to make a motion now.
Point for the general, right? We're all good, so.
All right. So, um, general fund stayed the same. Besides, there's going to be the, um, the midline, uh, raised-
Point seven.
Midpoint, yeah. That's going to be changed. Really, the only change that you're going to see is in the perpetuation fund, which I know we're not on yet. But I did put my next project on there of $500,000. And that is for not only re-binding the books, I know it says re-binding, but there's a lot more to it than the re-binding. It's going to be chemically preserving deacidification with the magnesium oxide. The pages are all going to be taken out of the books. They are encapsulated into like a Mylar Type D type of folder. So the pages aren't going- So, the pages aren't gonna be touching each other anymore, the ink's gonna be brought out of the paper, staining's gonna be removed. New binders, each book is gonna turn into basically three books because of all the Mylar, that Mylar is gonna be three millimeters each, so it increases the size of all that. And, uh, basically any tears or anything like that in the paper, they're gonna help restore that as well. Uh, but that's all in my perpetuation fund, the general fund stayed the same as last year.
Are these, you just digitized?
Yes, these are the same books that we just digitized, uh, we are required, though, to, uh, preserve those books, um, you know, forever, so.
That's a long time.
It is a long time, so we are doing that, and that'll probably be the last time those need to be done.
This time.
Um. Perpetuation fund is statutorily, I just wanna, um, remind everybody, which I'm sure everyone already knows, that the recorder, when it comes to perpetuation fund requests, does not have to have council approval per statute. I'm just, as long as the money.
His attorney or our attorney?
I, I'm just making, making it fuller, just.
Let's vote.
And I'm just including it, um, just to make everything transparent, so that you guys know there's nothing being hidden, um. It didn't have to be in there, but I just wanna let you know. Um, I don't have a, a real firm grasp of it, we just give them about twenty books at a time. Some of those books cost thirty-five hundred, um, some of them cost a little bit over five thousand dollars, it just depends on how bad they are, so. Um, he gets the books, or the company gets the books, and, uh, we just get a bill for it, so.
How much more staining and preservation do you have after this?
This'll be it, there's no other projects after this. So, um, there was two.
All the salaries in after this year.
Yes. Well, that was the, that was the goal, that was the goal, so.
Wait, next year's an election year, that's why he said, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I told you that the last, uh, uh, yeah.
What's, how much is in this fund right now, is it can support, I assume?
Oh, it's easily gonna support this, um, there's no, uh, there's not gonna be any hardship, and that kinda brings me to something Harold and I were talking about before the meeting, um. Uh, there's a certain amount that, uh, I can give back to the, uh, general fund that we've done every year. Um, and I'm willing to do that same amount again this year, I'll sign that, uh, declar, I forget, affidavit, yeah.
What is that?
So, I'll sign that affidavit.
Where's that money?
Um, I think it's around a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Whatever it was last year.
Yeah.
Increased it again a little bit last year, didn't we?
I think it was, it could've been last year that we've increased it, so whatever we did last year, I am willing to, uh, sign the same affidavit for.
And I'm just curious, why not just move some of that salaries in there right now to offset that, so you don't have to do that? We'll just move a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of salaries in there. I'm.
I, I, that's a great point. I, I believe the statute says that the only way that those monies can be used for, the perpetuation fund monies can be used for anything other than perpetuation fund purposes.
Per recorder's office.
Yeah, is through, by way of this affidavit, and the recorder has to certify by way of the affidavit that he's got sufficient funds in the perpetuation fund to sustain it.
Do that.
Right.
And I, you. So, what you're saying, though, it can still be done, why can't we just move the one twenty-five in salaries down here?
Guy, he's gotta agree to it.
Well, I'm just, okay, so, but if he did agree, he said, he said he would agree to it.
He said he would form.
He would agree to it next.
Oh, he's agreeing to, well, what he's.
To do the same thing we did last year.
That's what he's saying.
Which is?
The same amount that is going to be coming out of the perpetuation fund to help the general fund.
Right, but how much was that? Hundred and twelve thousand, so why not just move salary?
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't have it.
Well, what I'm saying is why not just move a hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of salaries into that salary line item that's already on there? And just lessen the hit to the general fund, rather than have to just put it into the general fund? Am I explaining that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I get.
Don't remember.
I mean, that wouldn't hurt you, right, you'd still be giving us the one, one twelve, I'm not trying to increase it.
Is there a requirement that?
It's a round amount, yeah.
You need to do the.
Chuck, you got that affidavit, you got it.
Yeah. From last year, I've got the affidavit, but.
Yeah, and if you do the affidavit, you just move salaries, the salaries, that's.
How much is it?
The affidavit has always been the amount that was.
Agreed to in the second meeting.
Yeah, it just, the, the, the amount that was, um, proposed, if I remember right, by the recorder for allocation into the general fund. And in your budget, did you, for this two thousand twenty-four, include that money? That perpetuation fund monies for the two thousand twenty-four, that proposed monies? So, then, if not, then we can put it in, in their now, it hasn't already been done. Uh, so, i- if it's the same amount that you did last year.
Mm-hmm.
We can move that money, uh, into the general fund budget, as long as you're in agreement, because the recorder has to agree to that.
Oh, yeah, I completely understand, and I'm not trying to force you, I'm just asking, I mean, it's still a wash, right?
It's still, yeah, it's a still, uh, hit to my, uh, perpetuation account.
But either way, you're gonna have a hit to your, if you agree to it.
Right.
You're giving us a hundred and twelve thousand, so let's just get it now, and that way, that, we can have a hundred and twenty, twelve thousand dollar off our general fund, rather than it just appearing next year and being used.
Do they need his signed affidavit for re, for records?
Not for doing what Andy's talking about.
Because we've done it before, where we put salaries in.
No, there number, yeah, there's a number in the other one.
I'm not trying to take advantage or do, change it, I just, I think that would be easier for us, because then the end of the, when Karen or Ms. Martin yells out the number at the end of the day, today, it'll be a hundred and twelve thousand dollars less. And it's already gonna be a big number, that's what I'm trying to do.
So, I don't know, with, with this, I, I know we've agreed upon it, I think we increased the, it was last year or the year before, I don't remember, and I just don't remember the exact number, you guys, it means it was a round number, like a hundred and twenty-five thousand or something.
Email, email.
Uh, but. Yeah, you got something, Ryan?
No.
Okay, uh. So, I, I think the question, too, is that reflective in this right now, what we've agreed upon every year? With those numbers?
See the perpetuation fund?
No, I'm just running it, the salaries are co, correct, out of the general fund and the perpetuation.
Uh, Councilman Bozek, um, how about? Because I'd like to consider this, um, if you would approve it tonight, and then at the third reading, we readdress that, and is that? Because it's all gonna come out about the same, I mean, it should all come out the exact same, either way.
But it's money incoming that we're figuring tonight.
Right, I would just like to cover my bases and research that before I agree to it, if that's.
If you put you on the.
No, that's, that's a valid question, so, um, right, at this point, I can't see a problem with it, but I'd like to research it just a little bit more to make sure I'm not making a colossal mistake with something.
Or somehow by you agreeing to it.
Right, and then I blame you for the rest of my life.
That, too, just to look at the statute again, to make sure that the timing that we're making the, uh, filing the affidavit timely, as it, you know, and, and moving the money in compliance with the statute, so.
Right.
Yeah.
So, eh, if you, I mean, I guess what I would ask is just that, uh, you kinda move forward like we have in the previous years, with the understanding that I will research this, um, Harold will research it, and then at the third reading, we can, um, discuss whether or not doing that again, is that fair?
Works for me, I don't know about the rest of everyone.
And, um, Chuck, would you get for me the amount that was allocated last year? Or even Ryan, if you could get that out of the perpetuation fund, I just, and then, so that you and I are on the same page with that figure?
Yeah, that actually would be nice to include in the, uh, affidavit if we go that route, so.
Rather than, rather than just. It, the, in prior years, we've actually included the number, but last year, and I don't remember specifically why, we just referenced the amount that was.
I think what it was is that we were kind of rushed, and that was a easy way to go ahead and get through it, and then we could go back and research that number.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I think that's what it was.
All right, and there's, I mean, it looks like, what, you're bringing in three hundred and thirty-three thousand so far, the receipts this year? You got a cash balance of nine hundred and.
Yeah, it's gone down just because home sales have gone down. So, we're not bringing, I mean, that's, that income that we were seeing a couple of years ago is not, or a few years ago, is not the same as we're seeing now, with the interest rates going up.
All right, was there a motion for just general fund?
Yes, there was, there was a motion.
For a hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, motion?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Sign. The recorder perpetuation, there's the added increase for the project that he's showing us, you know, like Harold wanted to work for him and tell us that. For transparency, there's a.
But you're still paying him, right?
Mr. President, I make a motion.
Eight hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and three dollars, motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, so, Chuck.
Chuck, sir? She's getting.
Trying to make it easier than I.
That's the affidavit, there's an ordinance here, Harold, um.
There was two, you, you have to do the affidavit and the ordinance. The affidavit is the, uh, you, you can't go forward with the ordinance without the affidavit, the affidavit, sort of the precursor to the ordinance.
Because he's certifying that he's, that, that.
That that fund can sustain it.
Exactly. So, he certifies it, then we do an ordinance, and then.
Yep.
Good to go.
Why isn't, there's not a number in the ordinance either?
Yeah, I think last year's was the only year that we didn't have a specific number, it was referenced to the budgeted proposed number that the, uh, had. Prior, you'd always reference the specific.
Not like the way you eat cheese sticks. Supposed to peel. That's the law.
All right. What's going on, Andy?
Yeah? He's taking bites of cheese sticks without peeling it.
Oh, we're folk.
It's me nuts.
All right, so, um.
Supposed to string it.
All right, health. All right, health department, sorry.
No problem.
What do we got going on here, I know, um, there's a, I know there's not a decrease, so what, what am I missing?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, we do not have any midline, midpoint salary increases in here. Um, I don't know if we were supposed to do it, or but we can adjust that.
All right, we'll, we'll work through that, um, so, what's the seventy thousand dollar increase then?
So, the seventy thousand dollars is that, uh, portion of our, uh, all of our nursing salaries were being paid out of a different fund. And so, what we'd really like to do is bring all of the, those nursing salaries into one fund. Um, and then, we, as you can see, we moved other things into different funds to make up for the difference. Um, so, um, there was ten thousand dollars for each nurse's salary that was being paid out of, um, our school liaison grant. Um, and so, we'd like to move all of that into the one fund, um, and then we're gonna have to make a decision as to what salaries we're gonna pay out of the local public health fund in the future, and what will stay in our regular health fund. Um, but like I said, we just wanted to get those all in one fund, and so, um, for the seventy thousand dollars in salary, we took the seventy thousand dollars from medical and dental supplies, we moved that over to the new local public health fund, and of course, raised it as well with the increased services that we're gonna have. And so, of course, for us, because our salary went up, our FICA and our perf went up as well, um, and then we also have the increase in, um, the medical and life insurance for this year. For training and ed, we had had some additionals last year, um, for our staff to attend some larger trainings. And so, of course, we were not asking for that this year, so that's the decrease of forty-two thousand dollars in that line item. Um, and then, same thing for travel, those kind of went together, the twelve thousand dollars for travel, again, we're not asking for that, so that's there, those were additionals last year. And then, under the maintenance agreements, we had a new software system that we implemented in twenty twenty-three, so that's been paid for. Um, and so, again, that amount of the, the difference there for the thirteen-two is a decrease.
So, Mr. President, I know we talked with Sheriff Bowne about Dr. Shelby, I think, was it, was it ten or sixteen thousand dollars for psychiatric services that he uses for? Was it ten, was it ten thousand? Um, we wanted to see if that would be able to be picked up by.
The health. So, I don't think so, so, in, um, health, there's mental health and there's public health, and they're in two different, so the state funded mental health and SEA one, and that all stayed at the state level, so then, public health was the SEA four. So, anything that we put money toward has to address one of those core services. So, of course, for some of those, we're gonna be able to address mental health through some of those core services, but I do not think that we'd be able.
I mean, I, I just, I'm not, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm just, yeah, I don't know that it would be able to be approved, but that's something that we can, we can look into.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I have a question, since the health fund is down two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, couldn't you just put that sheriff's request into the regular health general fund?
So, the reason that it looks like it's down so very much is because we also had a vehicle line item in there. Um, at the very, very beginning of the year, we had money that went in there, um, from, that we got from COVID monies to purchase our vehicles, and we spent that immediately, in, in twenty twenty, so, in twenty twenty-three, so that, um.
Was how much?
Two hundred and nineteen, I think.
So, this actually is increased, it's not a decrease, if it was two nineteen, and the difference to eleven, this is actually up eight thousand dollars more than last year.
So, the, the, the increase from this year to last year, you're right, and it is, other than our additionals, which we're not, is just the medical and life insurance.
Then we'll have to, uh, midpoints, we probably have some midpoints in there.
Well, you know, actually, well, the midpoint, um, the highlights of three areas, those three salaries, that's a total of seventy thousand dollars. You've got the PHN five, or the Director of Nursing going through three five, I think, seven three five two, you've got the HN five three nine, um, and there's five of those, and they're going to two, five forty-five to three twenty-six, five forty-five, which is fifty thousand. And then, you've got the one at sixty-four two sixty, which was at fifty-four two sixty, so those three salaries, midpoint is seventy thousand.
So, that was what they were getting paid before, we were just paying them part out of one fund and part out of another. So, their total salary was exactly what we have represented.
Here, it's just all in one fund, fund now.
No, but she was looking, I believe, at the Form one, four, one forty-four, which was showing the increases for those, that's what she was stating.
Right, because we have to do that for each fund, so in the other fund, where the ten thousand dollars was being paid for each of them in twenty twenty-three, now that's still not.
Oh, so there's another for one forty-four that shows zeroing it out?
Right.
I don't know if we did.
Did we not do one, since we weren't putting anything out of there?
I think we did the other public health, we talked about.
Oh, that's right, we added a nurse into the school, because that's part of the, um, we were adding another full-time nurse to be a dedicated school liaison, and so, we were paying their full salary out of that fund.
And we did not zero it out, we forgot to add that in there.
So, that, there's a savings and later that you need to tell the auditor about now, so she can change, or they can change?
Yeah, so for the eighty-nine thirteen, they were.
We do it when we get there.
Okay, yeah.
One, one at a time, it's not.
You do, you guys want, I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah.
So, I agree, because I want her to know that seventy thousand is because of the mid.
But she's saying it's not.
No, it's not.
She's saying she moved some over, so I guess I need clarification.
The green shows that it's midpoint.
I don't have any green on my sheet, that's why I'm.
The one forty-four?
Yeah, it's.
Have your salary.
It's. I think that's what we're missing, we don't.
I see, I don't have any.
We don't have the highlights, we don't have the highlights, we're confused.
No.
So, I, maybe, just.
There's probably over.
Coincidence, the numbers add up?
Yeah, so, nobody, yeah.
So, there's a seventy thousand dollars that you're shifting over out of the other funds, trying to clean up funds and put salaries all in one, but, uh, Auditor, um, Martin is saying that that's the, the midpoint, so it really, going up a hundred and forty thousand dollars is. Auditor, um, Martin is saying that that's the midpoint, so it really going up a hundred and forty thousand dollars is, if we add the midpoints into what you're doing and shifting over there. Mike.
Yeah, I don't know what the midpoint would be for all the salaries.
Yeah, we didn't figure in any raises for anybody.
Did we? So we'll have to take a look at.
I mean, they requested by the council.
Okay.
And that's what we did, and everybody else should be at midpoint.
Okay, so we, it's possible that we were just there?
Yeah.
From twenty twenty-three? Okay.
And it could have been for last year's transaction.
Yep.
Sure, yeah.
We'll look into it, I mean, we'll just leave it right now.
Yeah.
To see, and if, if we gotta take people up to midpoint, we'll take people up to midpoint, so we'll double check.
Yeah, and like I said, those, it was just, I don't know, for some reason, part of their salary was being paid out of eleven fifty-nine, and part of it was being paid out of that grant.
What's that?
So.
Sylvia's eyeballing me, I mean, what?
Nothing. I'm trying to track what's going on.
So Sylvia, this seventy thousand dollars is them moving salaries in other areas, but we, we thought that their midpoints, getting everybody to midpoint in the county like we promised last year, was that seventy thousand. There's just a confusion, do we, is there anybody left in the health department that needs to get to midpoint?
Yes.
So there is, and naturally came up with this seventy. Crazy that we've got two seventy thousand dollar numbers, but it's them shifting.
Okay.
Salaries over.
See, that's why I'm getting confused.
Yeah.
The interest.
You're shooting darts at me with that look, I'm getting scared.
Well, the, what I'm hearing and what the, I'm looking at.
Yeah, well.
It's okay.
So we made, that number may be one forty. Heck, you've always been a, a fan of the health department now, I don't know, what happened, what'd you guys do not?
Look.
Project an appointment.
I'm, I'm, this match is exactly what we asked for, but our asking was the seventy to be moved. I'm so worried about the food bill. Forget it.
Oh, it's all right. So then, you guys just wanna leave that? Ryan, you need to figure out, we can add the midpoints in there.
Otherwise, we don't get a true number.
Yeah, well, we won't have a true number tonight.
If you look at the numbers, last year's number is four one million three hundred and seventy-three, six fifty-three, plus three that we're addressing this year, but bring in three four three six five eight, which are the numbers on your.
Right.
That's, I, I don't know, it, the numbers add up for the midpoint, but you're saying that's what you did, you shifted it over.
Yeah, we, we requested things and shifted it over, our note says the portion of the public health nursing salaries from eighty-nine thirteen, it was exactly seventy, cause they were each, seven of them were being paid ten thousand dollars out of there. So if that's the case, and the seventy was the midline, then it would be one forty.
Can I just show that in your eighty-nine thirteen, your requesting that school is on sixty-five three oh nine?
Yes.
As far as the seventy thousand transferring over, I'm not quite sure.
We did not mark that, we did that incorrectly, I think.
Okay, so then that wasn't included in the information that you gave us, is what you're saying?
I think we put a note on there of what we were doing, but we did not address it on the one.
Yeah, it wasn't addressed in the one forty-four.
I can revise that and run that up, that's no problem.
That's when you're requesting an additional one, correct?
We have the one where we're requesting the additional, yeah.
Eighty-nine thirteen.
In eighty-nine thirteen.
Yeah, well, they will be deciding that for later.
Yeah, let's go back to the general fund, the, the general fund budget, right?
We don't, yeah, it's our health fund, yeah.
Health fund, yes.
Yeah, it's a levy fund, so.
Yeah.
What do you guys wanna do with this?
I make a motion to pass. To accept it.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, at the two million three hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars?
Yep.
Second, further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Yeah, you might wanna get with the auditor and.
Sure.
Okay.
Kinda crazy the two numbers added up. All right. Local health?
So this is the new fund, um, where we'll be getting the money from the Health First Indiana. Um, and we, um, were able to take this and set it aside for capital, so that's what's been done. Um, so that's where we get the total amount that we can, um, appropriate. So these salaries.
I had it in order.
Are for, um, our care coordinator, the new care coordinator that we are actually in the process, you guys approved at your last meeting of interviewing for right now, so we'd like to bring them on board, and we have that money in salaries from eleven fifty-nine for this year, but then their salary will go over here. Um, we also would like to hire a grants and contracts manager, um, because we will have distributions that we will be grant, sub-granting or contracting out. Um, and then they'll, you know, handle maybe some grant writing, reporting on all those grants, they'll have to keep up with the people, you know, whom we have sub-granted out to, to make sure that they're recording and reporting and things like that. Um, and then it also is to part-time, um, two part-time employees moved to full-time, I apologize. So one of them is our clerical staff on our foods and environmental side, um, because we are gonna have an increase in services right now, we have someone who comes from the other side as they can, and, you know, right, it's just as they need them on the day that our current part-time person's off. Um, and they just have so much traffic down there with customers in, that they meet with and things like that. Um, and so we would like to move her to full-time, and then we also, um, are requesting to move the part-time food service inspector to full-time as well. So that's what those salaries are. And then of course, that, um, FICA, medical life and perf go along with that.
What's distributions of eight hundred and nine thousand dollars, that part of your grants?
So those are, that's the monies that we'll have to contract out or sub-grant out.
So that's what I'm saying, could Jeff Ballen get ten thousand for Dr. Shelby? Is there anywhere in his, in the health department?
That's what, we'll just have to make sure that, I mean, it's possible, we'll just have to make sure that that would be something, you know, that would, it just has to meet one of those core services.
I get it, I'm just.
Yeah.
Million dollars, there's gotta be, I mean, this is kind of important.
Right, no, I understand, and that's exactly what that line item are for, contracts and grants and things like that, so.
And when you guys do have this grant program come out, will it be offered to the county departments like that, if they have something that could meet the guidelines?
So right now, we're in the middle of doing our, um, public health needs assessment, to obviously figure out, you know, what the biggest needs are. Of course, right now, we know what our leading cause of mortality is, which is one thing that we had to, um, we had to identify what our leading cause of, um, trauma and injury, um, death is, so we know that to identify, and so we're trying to just make sure that we, you know, capture all of the needs of the county and try to figure out where that's gonna be. So any of the monies that we spend out of this fund has to directly address one of those core services. And so once we figure out, like, where we're at on what we do in-house to do, and then what programs are out there, and what gaps we have, then that's how we'll, um, put out that, and, so in some cases, we'll enter into partnerships, and then we put them out for thirty days for public comment, and in some cases, it will be, you know, we're not really sure, but this is what we're looking to do, you know, please apply for that, so.
So yes, they can?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah, and this is, this is all brand new, so I apologize, I don't know if you just want me to go line item by line item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, a second on the floor, for this new local public health services.
So let me ask you a question.
Sure.
And I apologize, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So new money, we have one million five hundred thousand dollars, one million six hundred. So it's gonna be a separate line item. You can bring some other part-times, bring them into full-times, as long as it encapsulates it, the core services that, that you guys need.
Right.
My question is, is, I understand the perf, the medical, the FICA and all that, if you hire more people, you have to capture. My question is, though, you know, you have telephone, internet, some of that, I just want, I guess what I'm saying is, I wanna make sure that we have enough money in distributions that we can actually partner with people.
Sure.
Cause it looks, you know, like, I would imagine medical and dental supplies has something to do with smoking sensation, I would imagine maybe.
So medical and dental supplies, so we removed the seventy from the eleven fifty-nine, so that's where we currently had all of our medical, or through twenty twenty-three, had all of our medical and dental supplies, and we usually budget, the last few years, spent seventy thousand dollars. So we moved all of that over, and then we added to that, because of course, with increased services, we're gonna have increased medical and dental supplies. So there are some increases to some core services as far as, um, let's say that it's fluoride, providing fluoride is like a dental treatment, and it's not that that itself is mandated, but we might find that that's something that's a need. Um, it might be, um, prenatal vitamins as we get into maternal child health. So there are some things that we haven't, like, we haven't had, um, uh, a huge program in maternal and child health in past years, and so that's something that we are either gonna partner with somebody on, but we will start doing some of those things as well. So it's anything that we would use, so, um, Band-Aids and gauze pads, and any of those are medical and dental supplies, and so we.
You see where I'm coming, I just.
Yeah, sure.
We already have our, kind of like I always say, our overhead captured in local health, in our local health department, I don't wanna be redundant, I wanna.
Oh, sure.
Make sure we have the most amount of money going for services, and not, I'm just saying, data process equipment, I mean.
So part of that, so we have.
I just, I was just picking on it, I just saw that, so I just.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I can.
We capture, I was making sure we're getting a lot of services for money and not kind of being redundant and.
Yeah, I mean, I can personally, so, for example, when you were talking about, um, what we, telephone services, so those are mobile Wi-Fi units.
Right.
So right now, we're doing tons of outreach, tons of clinics out, and so you should see us trying to figure out who doesn't need their jetpack tomorrow, and like, who you can borrow until this time, and so we're just trying to make sure that each laptop has a Wi-Fi. And so that's kind of what that goes to, and again, some of these things, it's just, it's increased because of the increased outreach and the increased services, and so we tried really hard to do our very, very best to decide what that was going to be, and then still preserve what we put, of course, for distributions.
Again, I just.
Yeah, and this is a planning year as well, so then remember, you know.
Oh, I know, I'm just, no, I get that, I'm just saying, I just, if we have one point six, and we're using eight hundred for distributions, I, I wanna.
Yeah, and then.
Our maximum distributions and that.
Sure, and one of the other things we have to be able to do is, we have to be able to provide vital records, is uninterrupted, so if this building was demolished, we still have to be able to do that, so we're having to spend some money to get that equipment as well, and put it somewhere else. Does that make, so like, trying to, hopefully one of the, one of the buildings will stay, you know, that kind of thing, so that's why some of those things, we're happy to answer questions about any of the particular line items, or go one by one through them.
All right, any other questions on this? Seeing none, um, all in favor of the one million five hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Local health maintenance, one six eight. Increase eight, eight thousand dollars, training education, advertising, hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
So this is a fund that's going to go away, so this is what the eleven sixty-one replaces, the eleven sixty-eight and the twelve oh six, um, so our job is to spend it down until we can.
And we had some rollover from prior years that we're trying to spend down.
Spend down, all right.
Can you put sheriff?
Cause we have to get it to zero and then close it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, what's.
That's a perfect one to put sheriff's balance request in.
What's your limitations on?
I don't know that for real, but, right?
Hey.
If they're spending it down.
This much money, you can buy in ten thousand dollars for mental health.
I think he needs more than.
Especially for, yeah.
Yeah, from here, no.
We're gonna try to use it in twenty.
We'll spend it down.
Or possible, but.
It'll be for a good thing.
Yes, it will.
Otherwise, you have fun hanging out there for, you know, years and years.
It, yeah, I mean, is there a limitation on usage of this?
I don't know if they.
Dave, can you show us how much is?
I don't know either.
Please?
It's on there right now.
Oh, it is, thank you, I'm sorry.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we, we would have to check with the state, cause we do have to report out on this to the state. It's the money that they send us, so we have to report out on it every year. Um, so I'm not sure.
Connie actually might be. Pungible, we can move it around.
You know, if we have a timeframe, won't we?
Heard that's what I ran.
Use that money?
What's?
In eleven sixty-eight.
What'd you say?
But.
You don't wanna know. You don't wanna know.
But we have to project and report out on it, right? They're asking if there's limitations on what we can spend it on. Like if we can.
What's that? It, it is a.
What are you asking for with this, with Chief Ballen, like what?
He has a doctor who, when people go on calls and they see, you know, a death, and they need to talk to somebody, and he's had him at, I guess, Valpo PD, he's a psychiatrist, and he works with, um, first responders, you might know Mike, that, I think he's talked to us about that.
Sixteen thousand dollars.
There's sixteen thousand or ten thousand, I believe.
It, it's basically having a doctor on retainer, so that if people need PTSD, or they, they, they witness something kind of very hostile.
Traumatic.
And they need to talk to somebody, then there's somebody that they can talk to and resolve, well, you know, work towards.
Probably resolution.
So.
That wasn't there when, when I was there, we had, uh, you know.
But I guess the question would be is, is this something that maybe the health department did for everybody? You know what I mean, like, cause let's say some of, one of our employees see a car accident and it's really traumatic. Is that, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to be a police officer that witnesses something really, but that's where the thought would be.
Sure, yeah.
So it's definitely worth a conversation, I would imagine, you know, so.
Sure, yeah.
Doesn't the county already have the employee assistance?
Yeah, they do, but I think it was, this was.
He was having a call, he said.
Why can't this, why can't SEA one be used?
So that all stays at the state level.
So they didn't get it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if money can be requested, I think it was to ensure that, mostly, most of the money went to ensure that each county has access to, like, a porter star, cause I don't think, um, all counties have. And so I think that's what a lot of the money is going toward, um, and I know, but it did stay at the state level.
So we just need you to break us off twenty grand for Sheriff Ballen. You tell us what line item, pull it from.
At this point, I don't care.
You tell us where it comes from, but can you help us out?
Yeah, so we definitely will look into that, yeah, absolutely. I just know that these, like, these two funds are prescribed, like Connie writes for them, and then she has to report on them, so I didn't wanna, I don't wanna commit something that we.
So she's the one that'll get in trouble.
We don't want, yeah, we're not trying to drive a bus over your head.
All right, so there was a motion, I second, I think, on the, no, there's not, on a hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars?
A move to approve.
I second. Motion, second, for the discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, Pat, tobacco fund.
Make the motion.
Decrease.
Second.
Forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five, motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Sign, where we had, um, adult.
No, bioterrorism?
That zeroed out.
And abuse?
Yeah, we transfer that, yeah.
So, um.
That's going to zero?
Entertaining motion.
Yeah, it already did.
Zero on the budget.
Move to zero.
Motion.
I made a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, bioterrorism. Hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one.
Motion.
What's contractual service?
Yeah, who you contracted?
It's a, yeah. This is our emergency preparedness grant, so this pays for our emergency preparedness person, he's a contract employee. Um, it's not all, so part of it, he then pays, so it's all listed as contractual services, but then he pays for, like, storage and some other things out of it. Um, and he just actually, um, he's there like part of the week, and so, part of his budget, his budget gets approved through the state, and then, um, our board reviews it and approves it as well, and so he's actually hoping to hire a deputy as well, um, cause he's a commander in the Navy, and it would all come out of the same thing. Um, he's a commander in the Navy, and the possibility of him being deployed is, is very real, so.
Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sign, health grant, hundred and twenty-nine thousand, fifty.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign, COVID, COVID immune vaccination supplemental.
Motion approved.
Two hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty, motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Where are we at?
The testing.
Eighty-nine twelve.
Eighty-nine twelve.
COVID.
Epidemiology.
Epidemiology lab, decrease, fifty thousand, one hundred dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion, second. Motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
I just have a question with these
Sure.
COVID related, how long are those going to continue or you guys know, or is it just forever?
No, so these will be done when they're gone.
They're what?
When they're gone, these will be done when this amount is gone.
Oh.
COVID workforce co-op, two hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred seventy-five.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
What does that do?
Second.
So this is our school liaison grant.
It's a what again?
So this is where
Liaison?
Oh.
This is where we had those seventy thousand dollars last year, the seventy thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. It was paying ten thousand of each of the nurses' salaries. That's what we were trying to move over to eleven fifty-nine. Um, but then we would like to hire a dedicated school liaison out of that. So then that's where the sixty-five, three oh nine comes from. In addition to the
This isn't any new people or anything.
It would be a new nurse paid out of this grant, yes.
And what is, does this nurse go to multiple schools or one school?
Mm-hmm, they work with all the schools. All the full nurses and then
What's twenty-four hundred dollars for uniforms and clothing? They got to get special stuff or, you know, just wear their normal clothes?
Yeah, so that we just, we, no, it's fine. We just, we pay for some of their scrubs, like there are certain scrubs that are health department issued and then the embroidery and things like that.
What about the training and education, twenty-five thousand, I'm just
Wow.
And then, I just
Sure.
It's, and, and again, I'm I'm just asking questions because this is such a big budget.
Mm-hmm.
It's just, there's so much in training and education. I understand there's a lot of training and education, but what, what can you do with that money other than training and edu- it's just training and education?
So also, um, if, if it's educational and it promote what we're doing, then it can be like the giveaways that we give. So does that, so some of this is, will be, we're wanting to do a big back to school fair, um, health fair. And so that's something that we're planning for the summer. And so some of that money will be toward those kinds of things.
Are you guys doing anything with mental health with the kids at all or talking about that? Is that something that's on the, I know that's not what we're talking about now.
No, it's fine. I mean, of course, we would love to be able to. So part of that is, um, generating these partnerships and these relationships with the schools, um, and trying to figure out, you know, what we are going to be able to talk about or working with the people who we can partner with to go in there and talk about those. Well, um, one of the biggest things, mental health, um, with substance use disorder, suicide is the stigma. So it's hard to talk about, nobody wants to talk about it. And so one of the big things that we've identified is that we've really, an anti-stigma campaign is kind of really important to us because we feel like we've got to, we've got to tackle that so we can start talking about it, we can all start talking about it. Um, you know, in a partnership with the hub and in partnership, you know, with the Suicide Prevention Task Force and, you know, any of, all the partners. And so that's, we really feel strongly about wanting to start right away, um, countywide.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, health lead grant.
Motion approved.
Eight tobacco. Hundred sixty, motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sign, tobacco grant.
Motion.
Twenty-six thousand, four
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, so, um, yeah. I mean, as you're spending down, and I know the new money is what, is two years, that in hiring and stuff blowing out, but I'm, it, it's gonna eventually collapse back down when all the, the spend down with the COVID money, right? And if the health is not, you know, two years, all goes away.
Which doesn't all go away. It's an infrastructure bill, it'll come back up for the budget. It's not going to go away.
What budget?
New money, the one point five won't go away? Alright, alright, I absolutely hope you're right.
On camera.
Sylvia. So
Forever peace.
I think we're good, we're done? What's that? You guys are done? Yeah, we're done, uh. You guys got anything, anybody got anything before we go? Um, I don't know if they've got numbers, has got numbers of what we're
Even if they do, they can't be that accurate. All the things
I, I just like I'd like to address something Sylvia said earlier.
Yes.
And, and I agree with her a hundred percent as the new line item in, in regards to like, for the jail or for the juvenile detention that, uh, six thousand dollars, I believe, remember mentioned?
Oh.
Yeah, juvenile detention, as, as much as it hurts to have a new line, I agree with Sylvia that, you know, it's, it's going to grow. It's something that we need to address because it's going to be there.
Yeah, but it's going to grow big quick.
Well, I think, and maybe I might be wrong. I think this is something for the judges. So when they're, in my opinion, however, they're, they're kind of torn, they can get this evaluation to make sure that
It's a sentencing, yeah.
For, for, for sentencing, like to make sure, like if you're
There, yeah, well, in my experience, it, there's, you run into situations, and I'm not a judge, but I involved in these kind of cases regularly where it's, it's a unique, it's a, you might have a unique offender and you really need some insight. And you're going to be able to better protect the community sentencing wise, better fix on the likelihood of recidivism.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it's really for the judge to make, for the
But I, but I think what Sylvia was bringing up, and I agree with her, I mean, you're going to have two or three cases that they can do this with a year. And I figure they're going to get used to it, it's going to be a good thing. So that's what Sylvia's saying, that, that number of six thousand dollars, it's going to blow up quick.
When it comes, if, if it's a guilty and it's in, in child manifestation case, I wouldn't even spend the six thousand, I would give the maximum and be done with it. I guess that's why I'm not a judge. I would not spend
I have
On anybody
My sixteen years.
I would give them a hundred percent.
Go ahead Sylvia.
Oh, I'm sorry Sylvia.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking over you, go ahead.
No, no, I, I was just pontificating.
Time, in my experience, any time you create a new item, you started out with something small and you see the significance of, of how it could grow, it's going to grow. And it's in our, it's in our fund and it's going to grow.
But
Going to say we're using it, they're going to come back to us and we'll have to approach it and deal with it as they come before us. I would like to see the health department take on more, partner with more things like this. But, uh, and in all fairness, they say they are learning all, what these funds can be used for.
Well, they, they had, they had mentioned that, uh, it was a specific type of individual that they needed as opposed to what maybe the, uh, department was going to offer them. Would it, would it then, in my mind, I could be very wrong, is that get that individual who was qualified in that department where they would be able to cross over unless it's not in part of the mandate, that they have some with that particular credentials that the
I think, I think
The very specific
Yeah.
Discipline of, of
Sexual
Sexual psychiatry.
Yeah, to, yeah, I can't imagine that.
Psychiatrist.
I understand what you're saying, but I can imagine the health department's hiring those type of people that can, you know, do that type of evaluation to
I just try to see how much crossover we could get and, you know, get the biggest bang for
I want the health department to help good people, not, not criminals.
Well, it almost sounds like the health department needs to communicate with Sheriff Fallon to find out what his
Need.
Needs are and then see if their, whatever requirements can fit in it.
You guys will
Because they
Make a call?
Yeah. Because otherwise
Thank you, I agree.
So, yeah, it sounds like you're, you'd be willing to cooperate if you can.
You know how much we increased, we approved today in the general fund?
Oh, a lot, nine million, two one hundred and sixty.
The general, oh, oh, you're saying we approved.
So how much do we increase?
Increase
You mean nine hundred thousand? You said nine million.
Increase from
From last year, like what was our additional? You know, yeah.
Uh,
It's fine.
A lot.
If, yeah, if you could get that to us.
And to, you got to get all those salaries.
It's fine, guys, and I appreciate everything that they're doing. We, this is, you know, their first time going through this with us and they're working through our, our requests and they're doing a great job. And they'll figure us out and we're looking at some different sheets and it's, it's fine. Um, they're there, you guys got, anybody got questions, please reach out to them, don't, don't come here and get angry at them, at them. You know, they're doing good and we're trying to work, next year will be a lot smoother, you know, so
They've answered all my questions, I know I've called you guys a lot, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. So, yeah, well, we're going to have to do some moving, you guys, no doubt. We're, we're, we're saying yes to some things that I'm not sure we could say no to. There's increasing the cost of doing business right now, you know, like Sylvia said, the groceries is one of them that just, you know, vehicles that kind of got thrown at us a couple of years ago. I think we're just going to have to do some shifting back into some areas that, some funds that are being unutilized, some funds that have some growth to them that don't have any commitments yet and shift around. Um, we did increase some hourly today, but there's a lot of requests for new people, you guys see that too. And, you know, it, it's really coming out of the, the criminal justice, you know, system, which is you know?
What?
I mean, they, they have, I mean, especially the judges and probations and they, they rarely have come here and ask, um, you know? But, you know, I don't know, I asked the sheriff for some crime stats, um, I think he's working on them. You know, it would seem like the system herald, you know, the, I, you know, with trials going on, with, with, you know, more, some, more arrests, more trials, you know?
Definitely more, in a higher level of offender, just on average, we seem to be seeing as well. But that's, I mean, that's a little anecdotal, but that's the way I
And we haven't even gotten to the roads for the, uh, upstairs to the big one.
Yeah, so there's, there's the government people want and there's the government people are willing to pay for too, you know?
I agree.
And so Done a good job, but got a lot on our table, so. Any further discussion? I think Andy's ready to go down there, he's had enough today.
Stressed, stressed out.
What are you stressing about?
These numbers. This is a very stressful time of year.
We'll get it done.
Always figure it out.
We put ourselves in a good position that we're not
We are
We're not going to fall off the cliff tomorrow, we haven't, because of the work we've done over the years is, you know?
Problem.
So.
And because of Michelle Clancy and that reinvestment, that helps.
We've got that, but just be, I would encourage everyone to be careful to
Not reoccurring, I'm all
No, 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 I've just said it off the next chair.
Couple of years
Yeah.
Reoccurring, but
No, you can't count on that.
Yeah, you can't count on it, but it's a little bit of breathing room.
Yeah, for
An extra two and a half million.
Mm-hmm.
Well, four quid actually.
What's that?
Four mil. And three hundred thousand dollars roughly interest a month, that's what, three, six, three, three hundred plus thousand dollars, about three point eight. If I'm not mistaken, gentlemen, in interest for a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So, and we've been kind of using what, seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand has been calculated into our revenues every year roughly in there, so, you know, so
Does your number include, when you gave us the number at the first meeting, does that include the four million or whatever it's going to be?
No.
That's what I was hoping.
Nope, Andy, I got you.
What number did
That was hoping.
First meeting?
Twenty-five, four?
What we can increase?
It was one point
One point
Four or something?
One point four or five, if that's what you're asking for Sylvia, we kind of, we kind of
Okay.
Yeah, one point
And we have any idea where we're at?
We were at a mil, just over a million last meeting.
Well, I, I think the, um, the midpoints are going to be a little higher than we thought. Yeah, the midpoints are messing Yeah, the midpoints are, yeah, I mean, what we promised, what we started last year was, I mean, we just couldn't stop doing that. We did
Who asked the question?
Over half of the county last year when we started the wage study and we did that. And then it was, okay, we'll do everybody else to get them all the way.
Getting this budget, you said we would have funding to do that.
Yes.
Bring everybody up to midpoint.
To midpoint, yes. And I think, you know, originally there's, the numbers fluctuated, five hundred thousand, but I think it's more true, maybe eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, that midpoint number. So we might have been off a little bit on that, but to midpoint, to do what we promised, started promising last, you know, um
Then we're, we're going to be done.
Well, that's the midpoint.
That's not, that's not giving any new raises, that's just bringing people up to midpoint.
That's just finishing the other half of the county roughly to do what we did last year. Remember, we did, we did everybody last year to
We
Last year, everybody went to midpoint. And then at the end of budget session, we included like
This is nine one one.
They let you stay in?
I, I think, the sheriff
Right. But at the end of this year, everybody will be at midpoint.
We'll have established a new
We've done a good job.
Bottom.
Apparently.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have established a new bottom, but it doesn't, I mean, we've talked about raises every year though.
I know we do, but we don't talk about going up
Right.
Border, up a midpoint, no.
It was a big jump, yeah.
It was a big jump.
Yeah, so
I'm very proud of what we've done and we gave, we gave raises on top of that to, to some people.
They cloned you. Yeah, I committed the stipends. Into Hispanic version.
To other people
And then a stipend to others that got nothing.
So Sylvia, your point's taken is, Ryan helped me out here in my head, it's, the raises last year were like, were they like, one, what were the raises? One point
One point three.
One point three million.
Stipends were seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand. So if we take the one point three million and if there's round numbers, another seven, eight hundred thousand dollars to finish what we started with that wage study, that wage study is costing us over two million dollars in raises to, you know, kind of bring everybody to that parity, to kind of a comparative salaries around. So, yeah, it wasn't, wasn't cheap, but it was our employees, you know.
And if you look on some of the line items, there was, you know, some of the department, not, let's say department has, I saw some raises of maybe 8, 9, 10,000. And some of the, say workers were getting up to 500,000, you know, it just all depended on, on, you know, what category they're in. So again, getting them to midpoint, some people would only see, I saw one get like a hundred dollar raise.
It was terrible.
So that's where you kind of have to, they're at a midpoint, but to say they're getting a hundred dollars is much of a raise this year.
Well, last year, that's why we gave them a stipend on top of, everybody, nobody got less than 4,000.
4,000 last year, correct.
I mean, we've done a really good job for our employees, but you guys hear it. Every, I, almost every department's saying they can't hold on to anybody. They can't recruit and hold on because even a $2 million, two-year wage study isn't even. We're being told it's not, you're not even close still.
Where, where do we rank as a county? Percent behind on everything.
Right? It, it's.
Where do we rank in the county as medium?
Well, wait a minute though, isn't it all over the, the country that the people that want to work are down?
I, unemployment's at like 3.5%, I'm not sure, but maybe.
Pardon?
We have a low unemployment rate, 3.5%.
Then.
People can go out there and negotiate. They can, they can move.
Well, then God bless them.
They'll find another 5, 10,000 somewhere else.
There's some out there. I don't know how they're paying their bills. I, what they're doing.
What was that, Andy?
It's what it is.
Where, where do we rate as a, as a county in regards to their, our average or median income?
Oh, I don't, I'm not certain about that, yeah. Just household median income as a county?
See on Wikipedia, they have that out, that info.
I don't know why that brings it up.
And what brings that to question to my mind is, you know, is there a county out there with similar median, median income? And what are their budgets in comparison to what we have? You know, are their taxes higher or?
I think we're doing quite well.
We're probably gonna be lower because we're lucky enough to have that foundation budget where we're making the interest off of.
The hospital, yeah, okay.
And that foundation, and people ask all the time, that's probably saved us from raising lit years ago to about a quarter percent.
Raising tax.
If we're getting, our lit budget's about 6 million, right? And that's, that's a quarter percent. Because our lit budget is .50, but half of that, you guys remember, goes to the RDA.
Right.
Pay the 3.5 million annual fee and then the rest of that .25 goes to homestead credit.
Correct.
To the homeowners as.
When it does come to lit, we are the lowest in the state.
Yeah.
At .50, we don't even, we only govern off of half that .50.
Yeah, because 3.5 million goes to RDA.
Yeah, the.
That'd be nice to have that back.
.25 of that goes to, yeah, goes to the RDA and homestead.
I think we tried that though.
We tried that right away. It didn't win.
It didn't win. It didn't work.
We tried.
Because that would be.
No, we're the Chicago metropolitan area.
Imagine having that now in your RDC, an extra 3.5 million dollars.
We are with them.
10 years, 30 million dollars, which you bond off and do the projects.
Tried.